Good evening. I'll call to order this called meeting of the Board of Trustees for Thursday, May 16th at 5:00 PM. The purpose of this meeting is to canvass the election results for the trustee election held on May 11th, 2013. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Barron. President Barron, Trustee Hogg, and Trustee Pampa, you have before you a set of materials relating to the results of the trustee election which was held Saturday, May 11th, 2013, to elect trustees to three-year terms for Place 4 and 5 on the Board of Trustees for the Arlington Independent School District. The set of materials you have before you contain the following: a summary sheet of total ballots cast and votes received for each candidate by polling location, an official cumulative report of early votes and election day votes for each candidate from Tarrant County Election Administration, and three, an official precinct report by polling location from Tarrant County Elections Administration. The results of the election are as follows: Place 4, John Hibbs, 6,030 votes; Elisa Simmons, 4,061 votes; Place 5, Jamie Sullen, 6,873 votes; Brittany Perkins-Burton, 3,116 votes. If you accept this canvas of election to fill three-year terms for Place 4 and 5 on the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees, it would be appropriate to hear a motion to approve the canvas at this time.
Mr. Hogg.
President Barron, I move to approve the election results for the trustee election held on May 11th, 2013, for Place 4 and Place 5.
I second that motion. Motion by Mr. Hogg, reluctant second by Mr. Pampa. Second by Mr. Pampa. If there's no further discussion, please vote. All members present voting in the affirmative, the motion passes. That concludes our work at this session. We're adjourned. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're calling back into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees for May 16th. It's now 7:12 PM. Thank you all for coming out to be with us tonight. We'll start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you join Mr. Pampa in leading us in the pledge?
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join me now in a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is to consider administrative appointments. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Barron. I'd like to recommend the individuals discussed in closed session for area superintendent for elementary and the principal for Carter Junior High School.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pampa, second by Mr. Hibbs. Please vote. All members present voting in the affirmative, the motion passes. Dr. Reich is at a school function, and Mrs. Peña cannot be with us tonight. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Barron. It's my pleasure to present our new area superintendent for elementary, Dr. Stephen Wertz. Dr. Wertz attended Brigham Young University and received his Bachelor of Arts in Spanish. He's attended University of Texas, Arlington, Master of Education, Educational Leadership, and Dallas Baptist University where he obtained his Doctorate in Education. Dr. Wertz most recently is the Division Director for Elementary Schools in Irving ISD, has been a principal in Irving, has been a principal in Grand Prairie, an assistant principal in Irving, a first through fifth grade bilingual teacher, and a fourth through fifth grade bilingual gifted and talented teacher. Dr. Wertz, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say? Anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes, thank you, President Barron, members of the board, Dr. Cavazos. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you sincerely for the opportunity to join the Arlington ISD team. I'm very excited about the things that you're doing for students here in Arlington. I'm looking forward to contributing. As a parent and educator, one of the things I'm excited about is the innovative and strategic way that you're going about preparing students for their individual futures, and I'm looking forward to collaborating with the team as we work towards accomplishing the goals in the Achieve Today, Excel Tomorrow strategic plan. I've been very lucky in my life. I have a family that's been very supportive for me throughout my career, and I want to take a moment to introduce them to you tonight, if that's okay. This is my wife, Christina. My youngest daughter, Sophia, she's going to be in kindergarten next year. My second child, Olivia, she's in third grade this year. And then my oldest son, Tanner, he's actually, he'll be in fifth grade next year. So, thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to supporting the team and the campuses as they work to achieve their goals. So, thank you so much.
At this time, I'd like to introduce the new principal for Carter Junior High School, Ms. Rachel Brown. Ms. Brown attended Southern Methodist University in Dallas and obtained her Bachelor of Business Administration, has attended University of North Texas in Denton, and obtained her Master's in Curriculum and Instruction. Her most recent experience is the associate principal at Wiley High School. She's been an assistant principal at Wiley High School. She's been an ESL teacher at Wiley High School. She's been an assistant principal for Curriculum and Instruction at Dallas-Kan Academy and a teacher at Dallas-Kan Academy, and she has served as a campus case manager with communities and schools in Dallas. Rachel, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say? Anyone you'd like to introduce at this time?
Thank you, President Barron, members of the board, Dr. Cavazos. I too am extremely excited about coming to Arlington ISD as the principal of Carter Junior High. I know that there are some Carter employees here and staff, and so, thank you for coming to support me. I can't wait to get to meet all of you guys. You know, coming from, you know, this is going to be my first principalship, I feel like I have had strong leadership that has helped me get to where I am, and I look forward to working with the strong leadership here in Arlington to help me become the best principal that I can be at Carter Junior High, to help them get to where they need to be, based on the strong foundation that's already been built there, with a strong focus on building relationships with students and staff, and focused on instruction so that we can get to the next level and continue the greatness. With me tonight, I'll just take a minute to introduce my family. My daughter's, I don't know if she's going to make it all the way, but my husband, Keith and Brown, is right there. My youngest child, Riley Nicole, is right there. She's three. My son, Quentin, back there is nine. He is in fourth grade and will be in fifth grade next year. My mother and fathers, Tom and Sue Johnson, and my mother-in-law, Gloria Brown, are all here to support me. So... Again, thank you very much for the vote of confidence. Excuse me, I can't wait to get started, and I'll be seeing you guys all the time now.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Wertz and Ms. Brown will join Mr. Hill out front. We'll have a receiving line. If you let the board go first, we'll go through the receiving line and come right back in and continue with our meeting. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is action item A, to consider a parent-student grievance. The board held the hearing on this matter on April 4th, 2013, and we will now consider final action. First, the board will move to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek and receive advice from legal counsel. We're in closed session now. We are now in open session. Is there a motion on action item A?
Yes, I move to uphold the superintendent's decision in this case.
I second that motion. Motion by Mrs. Sullen, second by Mr. Pampa. Please vote. All members present voting in the affirmative, the motion passes. Further, with regard to the weight training, safety, and team-building program discussed during the hearing, we direct the superintendent to implement this program district-wide. We also direct the superintendent to report implementation of this program on the district's website. And that concludes that hearing. That brings us to the discussion items. First item is Spring 2013 Employee Engagement Survey. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Barron. This evening, we'd like to visit with the board about our engagement survey, and this is our employee engagement survey, and it's one of our key pieces of our strategic plan for Year One. And so, Studer Education is here to present the results. We have contracted with Studer, and they have collected the data, and Janet Pilcher is here with Studer to give us a presentation of the results.
Good, thank you, President Barron, members of the board, and Superintendent Cavazos. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight, and just wanted to let you know that we've been in, my colleague and I, Rob, and I, she left yesterday to go to her nephew's graduation, so it's that time of year that where we're celebrating the great times of school. But we've been here Tuesday and Wednesday doing the survey rollout process with the leaders of the district, and we've had just a phenomenal week. Just want to, I've been managing him up all week, and I think I should probably do it publicly just because we had such a great experience when we came, we did our presentations at the Professional Development Center, and Lynn couldn't have been better to us. It was just superb service that was provided, and it just is so nice to come in and feel so welcome and have the tools and resources that we need to do the jobs that we have. So, we really appreciate him for that, for that day. And I'd also like to just take a moment and thank Superintendent Cavazos and Dr. Carter for being there with us the whole time. And one of the things that we talk about, the success of the work that we do really depends on the commitment of the executive leadership, and in our first experience here doing training, we saw that commitment. So, I really appreciate that. So, I'm going to spend a few minutes talking about the results from the first survey, which is the employee engagement survey. And if you look on the, at the slide, we have three surveys that we'll be rolling out the results to, and this is the first one, which is the employee engagement. We have completed the parent satisfaction survey, and we're in the final processes of analyzing the data and submitting that results report to the district. And then we're, also we'll have a third one, which is the district support card. That survey is the assessment by school leaders of the services that they receive by the district departments. So, that's what we'll have in the next, next month. We'll basically have the completion of the first baseline set of surveys, three surveys. Tonight, we're going to talk about the results for the employee engagement. And we define employee engagement and have defined the construct for employee engagement as the measure for the survey, as the extent to which leaders provide really the best work environment for their employees so that they have an opportunity to reach their highest potential. So, this is really about employees having an input, the input into how well their leaders are doing to provide a good work environment for them. So, when you're looking at the results, keep that in mind in terms of what that represents. And with the survey, we have completed a reliability study, so we feel pretty confident that it does measure that construct really well. In the results, we have an overall mean, so I'm going to do a couple of things. I'm just going to give you some overall district analysis, and then there's a very detailed report that breaks it down by department and by school. I'm going to talk about the overall district results, and then I'm going to do a couple of things with sharing where does AISD compare to some of the other districts that we're working with in terms of the baseline. So, the overall mean was 3.80 out of a 5-point scale with 4,559 people completing. So, that's pretty good. And what we find is the baseline, as we continue and we use the results and roll out the process, and that more people will continue to complete their survey, and we'll usually, we'll probably see that number increase, hopefully. What we provided as a snapshot is a picture going, there are 15 items on the survey, and so we use this picture to kind of show the peaks and valleys. In other words, what are the things that are working well, and where are the areas where there are dips? And when we did the survey rollout process, we talked to each leader about doing some type of visual like this as they begin to roll out the process. And it's important to celebrate some wins as well as it is to look at some areas where improvements can be made. Here's really the interesting part. So, if we look at the employee engagement survey, and we look at the overall mean, Arlington Independent School District is represented by the green bar, and the comparison districts are in the other bars. So, basically, when you look at this, what we see is that the school district is starting in a good place. It's starting about, maybe a little bit above, or right at where some of the other districts start, better than some, not quite as good as others, but basically solid. And that's kind of the way we look. It's a solid starting point for building a baseline of excellence, and it's a good starting point, a really good starting point. This slide shows, there are three superintendent items on the survey, and so, we pull those out, 11, 12, and 13. 11 is manages finances effectively, 12 is communication throughout the district, and 13 is about decision-making, so it's finance, communication, decision-making. And so, we pulled out the superintendent items and did the same type of comparison. And so, this, what you see here is, this is a really good slide in terms of executive leadership because AISD is in the green. And so, what it basically shows is, for the most part, Superintendent Cavazos is pretty much at the top in terms of the baseline. So, that's probably good news for him, and also, you know, he's got to, he's got to improve still. So... But, but I think it just speaks highly of, I mean, that is a very healthy indicator for being able to move to a continuous improvement process. The last item that we look at, that we pull out in terms of comparison, and really specifically looking at this, is number 14, which says, "If given a choice," now, employees are completing this, remember the survey, so employees are answering, "If given a choice, I'd recommend that a parent select this district for his or her child." And so, this slide is not as good of news as some of the others. And what we usually say is, this should be the question that we get the highest score, because as employees, we should feel very confident about recommending the place that we work to others. So, this is kind of a, it is our gauge of organizational and, of culture and health. And so, one of the things that we talked about in the rollout process development with leaders is what we want to get to is when individuals are completing the survey, we want them to understand that when they're, when they're choosing a low score for that item, that they're basically scoring themselves low as well because they are part of the school district. And that's, so sometimes people will say things like, "I'm fine," or "My school's fine," or "My department's fine," but it's all those others. And so, that, what we're trying to build is an ex, all excellent schools, all excellent departments, we're an excellent school district. So, that, that measure becomes really important in terms of tracking to us the organizational health of... The area's working well, so we just kind of pulled in general, looking at the survey results, the three highest areas and the three areas that, that are the lower-scored areas, the working well, resources, and processes are in place and available from a district level that was high. So, and we talked a lot about why, why, why is that the case? And we certainly experienced it when we were in the Staff Development Center. Good decisions are being made concerning the expenditure of funds, and expectations for job performance are clear and communicated. So, those were the items that rose to the top. The areas for improvement, not so uncommon, by the way. So, if we were to take our school districts and put them side by side, we would find these are probably the three areas that rank at the bottom in most cases. Specific feedback focused on helping employees improve performance, specific feedback on the strengths of employees, and then input from employees for decisions affecting their job. So, those are the things that we, the survey rollout process in and of itself really begins to provide a way for employees to provide input. So, we're affecting that right away. The next steps of the process, the LDI survey rollout process, we did that this week. So, that is kind of, we did that next step. And then, the leaders will roll out the survey results, the employee survey results, to their employees by the end of the school year and create very specific action plans based on the input of their employees. And then we'll again reassess in December to see how much progress that they've made. So, that's where we are with employee engagement, and I'll take any questions or comments that you have for me.
Mrs. Sullen.
Thank you, President Barron. Thank you, Dr. Pilcher, for being here this evening. Certainly been excited to see what these results would be and get this process underway. So, thank you, Dr. Cavazos, also for the amount of work that the staff has put into this. I did have just a few questions this evening, the first of which, we've just finished this baseline on surveys, and then we'll take that information. It'll be meaningful because we'll be using it to, to make changes that are necessary in the district. How often do you think we'll be doing surveys? What would be the frequency?
For the employee engagement, so, let me break the three apart. For the employee engagement, we'll do that twice a year. So, we'll do a pulse check in December to kind of, as a progress monitoring piece, and then we'll do another survey in the spring, and that will be base, look at where did we come from now until next year to see if we have growth. And from that, once we, in our next session, when we come back, we'll begin setting very specific goals based on those baselines with every leader. So, we, so, this is the district goal, and then every leader has his or her goal. So, we'll look at where their starting point is. So, everybody will start with their starting point, and then we'll look at where should they grow within a year's time. And then we'll reassess in a year's time to see if individual leaders, as well as the district, achieve that goal.
And that would be also for the parent and...
Parent will be, once a year, we do parent every spring, and so, we do it once a year. And then, the support cards is completed every 45 days, which, we say every quarter in a school system, it's three times a year.
Okay.
And that, so, and that, that data, the important part, the important part of that is that every time we give data back to, and results, we roll, the leaders roll the data out so that we're continuously using that for improvement purposes. So, the results are important, but probably what's most important is what we do with it after we have those results.
Exactly.
That's the key.
Exactly. And then, go back out to have community employees weigh in on those, on those changes, too.
Yes. And the, so, with the survey rollout process, the leaders will roll out their three top items, roll out their three lowest items, and then the, we've, we taught them a process, or modeled a process for the way that they could get input and then choose one to work on, one area to work on, and then specific action items on how they will work on that within 90-day period.
When I look at the number of surveys that were assessed and completed, it looks like a large number. Is that unusually large, or, which I hope that we, we have a tremendous amount of employees willing to offer their opinions?
Yeah, in terms of the total number completed, I thought it was a really, I mean, a strong number. You know, I think we're always wanting more, but I, for the first time, I think you, we were really excited, and we were pleased and presented being pleased that you had that many people complete the survey.
Yeah, there was more than I expected, but I'm delighted to see them all.
Absolutely. I think which speaks very highly of the employees in the district because they took the time and, to do that. So, we were pleased as well.
I have a few more questions. I'm going to let some of the rest of you guys ask, maybe you have...
Mr. Pampa. Thank you, President Barron. Dr. Pilcher, we're so glad to be working with you. We're excited about this program, about this process. And I'm really excited to get just some real data back with no sugar coating, or, you know, trying to kind of, only, you know, a lot of times, we have a tendency to celebrate what's good and not necessarily talk about what isn't so good. And I think this process forces us to celebrate those things that are good, but recognize the areas where we can make improvement. And we are never going to get better unless we are very aware of those areas that we can improve. And I think this, this brings it out right away. So, there's, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. And so, I'm thrilled about that. Can you tell me a little bit, I know that probably for privacy issues, you can't tell me who the other districts are, and that's fine, but can you tell me a little bit about their profile?
Yeah, be glad to.
Their size, you know, what, what they look like in essence?
Yeah, thanks. And the districts range from small districts to small, very, small districts to districts that are a little bit smaller than you, to some that are a little bit larger. So, I mean, we go from 6,000 to 72,000 students. And kind of interesting what, what we find, it's kind of, interestingly, the smaller districts are the ones that have the lower means, you know, which is, you would, it's, you wouldn't expect that, but there are probably explanations for that, too. But what we, what we have found, that when we look at the demographics and we could, we could take some that had, look at the ones that have the demographics more like you, then you're, you're right even with where the starting point is. Maybe .01, .02, you know, difference in that. And a 3.8, the other piece to, well, no districts have, starts at the 4.0 out of the 5-point scale, and, and usually, it's really at that 3.8 range. So, so, there's, the ones that are closest to your size are neck and neck with where your starting point is.
Okay, thank you. And then, on the, question 14, is that similar to like a net promoter score? Are you familiar with the net promoter score concept?
Yeah.
And, I mean, it sounds real similar to that.
It somewhat models that. So, it, so, in terms of the interpretation, I think that's what we're trying to do, is use that item as, as building that type of interpretation.
And usually, in a net promoter score, you know, a score of 50 is good, a score of 70%, it's tremendous. And so, you know, three and a half would be good, but I'm seeing much higher numbers here. So, maybe there's a little bit different, you know, statistical analysis for that. I'm disappointed with that score, that we would get such a low score, but obviously, then that just, we know what we have to do to work on that. And in regards to that, does every campus get their own, their own survey results specifically for that campus?
Yes. So, the report, this, this is the report, and so, the reason it is so thick is because there's a chart for every department and every school. So, there's an overall district results report, and then there's an, each school will get their own in terms of how, what their results are, their mean score, and their mean by item, and the number of people who participated. So, so, each school, so, some schools may be, so, for example, with that item, there may be some schools that have a higher rating than other schools on that item.
Okay.
So, we begin to kind of parcel out, although we use the same process, the, the needs for growth at schools will be different, and so, we look at those individual needs by school.
And that's great. Again, getting away from the cookie cutter that everybody's doing the same thing, and everybody's working on the same issues, that may not be an issue at their campus. So, it's, it's perfect that they have the results for their specific campus, and they know what their strengths are within that building and what, what areas they can work on. So, I think that's tremendous.
That's right, yeah.
And I think once you start putting all those together, then you see the district as a whole... as a whole improving, when, when the, when the individual campuses are improving.
Absolutely. That's the, that's the, the, that's what we hope in terms of, with the process.
Yeah, that's great. Said, I love that process. On the, what could be improved, that I think it's the last slide, maybe the second to the last slide. The first two questions strike me as really an indication that we need to improve our employee evaluation, so it's giving, giving them that feedback that they need. Obviously, it looks like they want to know what they can do better. And, and maybe the, the tools that we're using right now don't give them that information. They want to know where they're, what they're doing well, just like pretty much all of us, right?
Right.
And so generally, if you have a, an effective evaluation tool, it gives you those two items for sure. And so I think that, for us, that's, you know, kind of a affirmation of the direction that we're looking at to develop a stronger evaluation tool. So I think that's, what, what would you say about that?
Yeah, I, I think an evaluation tool, also looking at it from a formative process on, on when, when leaders walk into, let me just, when we, when we, if we're working with a school and we walk into a teacher's classroom, one of the things teachers say to us is, "Don't leave and don't tell us what you're thinking when you're in there." And so one of the things that we started doing is, we don't ever leave a classroom without putting a post-it note or something to look at, especially if it's, if we're looking just for some of the strengths and saying, "Here's what I saw that worked well very specifically." And so it's the appreciation of, "I don't really mind that you come in my room, but can you give me some feedback so that I don't have, so that you're reducing my anxiety, and I'm willing to engage in a dialogue with you to improve my performance, and if you recognize my strengths even better in that process?" So if you look at that example, it hits all three of those areas for improvement. So part of it is just that daily process of how we interact with our teachers or our employees as we're doing daily work. And then the other is, then what happens at the end when we actually evaluate performance? We should have helped improve that performance so that the teachers and employees can hit the mark, and then adjust if not.
Well, again, this is just the beginning, and it's, it's good to have a baseline of where we are and a process to continue, and a system that is going to drive real improvement from the campus level up all the way through the, through the districts. We're very excited about that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hock.
Thank you, President Barron. Dr. Pilcher, thank you. You know, it's about, luckily I'll be quick, I have one quick question, because Mr. Pampa took two of mine, because we were thinking the same place. So it's a, that's a great thing. You know, as we developed this baseline, we're then gonna, your group's gonna work with our data department and measure these with our 28 metrics that we're judging on because right now we're developing a baseline.
Mm-hmm.
And as we move forward, what really matters is, these engagement numbers go up, what's it correlate to, to what we're doing? Is it improving our engagement scores, our test scores, our dropout rates, those type of things? Will that be from y'all's department, or will you mainly just give us the data, and then our data department will correlate those two together?
I can tell you what, what we will do, and then you'll walk, and Wally can tell you what he'll, he'll do. What we, what we really look at is what we call a, a scorecard, or, so we'll, so it'd be, it's like an advanced organizer result. So what are, what are some important, let's just take the school, for example, what are the important core measures of, of a school? Student achievement, obviously. We, employee engagement, so that we can make sure we're providing an environment where teachers can do their best work. And then parent satisfaction, we want to make sure that, that the parents are satisfied with their child's education. So what we'll begin to do is establish very specific goals from, here's the baseline, we want to move to this particular point by the end of the year. And then from that, we'll create formative measures or, or progress measures along the way so that we can get a pulse check of how we're doing. And then specifically, what are the one or two actions that we're going to do under each of those that's going to help us improve performance? So from our standpoint, that's the visual, and then we dig, dig. So the process is standardized, so to speak, and consistent across leadership, but it's, it, it, it changes based on what the highest need is for a department or a school, as, as we were talking about. So not everybody's going to be working on the same thing. It's going to be driven by what the data tell them. Did I answer your question?
No, that's good. And then, Dr. Carter, I'm assuming it, will then take all that related back to our 28 metrics, and, so that, once we have a year-long baseline, and we've done a couple of these, we can then see, as these metrics increase, decrease, we relate it back to our engagement surveys, where they correlate, correct?
That's correct. Because one of the things that could be easily correlated is increases in student achievement, how does it correlate with increases in some of these other metrics? And so that's what we'll do with the, the 28 as well. And there are a few of them that we extract from these surveys, because it's not like all of it, it's just certain pieces, and that's what we're looking at.
I know in my professional life, we can correlate a direct line showing higher client engagement numbers and increased higher client revenue. Now, we're not talking revenue here in the district, but it works the same way for student satisfaction, test scores, dropout rates, extracurricular engagement. So, um, thank you, Dr. Carter. Dr. Pilcher, one last question, and Mr. Pampa took a little bit of this. So we're breaking it down and sending it out to each department. What's the minimum number that we have to ensure confidentiality? Because if you ever ruin the confidentiality of someone filling out these surveys from employees, you ruin the purpose of these. Is 15 the minimum number? You know, I hear sometimes in healthcare, it's 50.
Yeah.
Sometimes I say 15 in surveys. What's the minimum number of a department? Because I wouldn't want to think we're picking School A, 4th grade, and those four teachers are filling it out. It's pretty easy to figure out.
Yeah, it doesn't dig that deep.
Okay.
So the, it, school is no problem because it just basically, the identifier is school. Where we have to really kind of watch that is the departments, because some departments may have two or three people. And so we really work, so at the beginning, one of the things that we, that we did before we implemented the survey was, we did, we had a group of individuals come together as a team, and we talked about the process, and we talked about the survey items, and we talked about the best way to administer. And, and we talked, so we kind of landed on, here's where we're going to start. The other thing we also said is, is, you know, there may be particular areas where we have to consolidate so that we're not, we don't have a one or two department, we may consolidate that into a department that becomes bigger, for example. So as we go, and we can do that. So we can make those modifications, and we should make those modifications. And that, that team of individuals who provided that advice to us, one of the things that we'll do is come back to them and say, "Okay, now that, now, here's what we did, and now that we've done it, what are the things that we could do to improve it, and what recommendations would you made?" But what's important to us, to more specifically answer your question, it's very important to us that, that individuals completed this without being identified.
Right.
And so we, that was like number one, and we sacri, we sacrificed some things.
You have to.
In order to ensure that. And so that's in the, especially in that first, you know, in the, in the administration, I mean, you know, sometimes we're never going to get the, the world that's the, the best. I mean, we're going to try to get to the best that we can, but we're never going to get to 100% where everything is satisfied, because we're going to sacrifice some things for another. But what would, what we did, what we suggest that should not be sacrificed is to, not, I mean, that everyone should be able to complete that survey feeling safe and secure, that they're providing input, and that, you know, nothing will occur or happen to them because of that.
If that's ever questioned, then the whole purpose of the survey is ruined.
You lose total, you lose total trust in that process.
You've lost the whole concept, so, that's why I was asking that question.
Yeah.
I'm always concerned.
It is. It's, and it should be asked, we put a, we put a statement, you know, that says it's anonymous. We, we don't even, we can't track IP addresses. We don't even put it in a form where we can track. So if anyone asks us questions about anything in particular, we wouldn't be able to respond to those. So we really protect that.
Perfect.
The, the purpose, the, you know, the purpose is really, again, it is the results, but, but most important, it's to help, to, so that employees can provide input so that we can improve and create a better work environment, so that they can really affect student achievement in the best possible way.
Thank you for helping us develop a baseline.
Mr. Hibs.
I appreciate the information that you brought, and this was one of my favorite subjects, actually, in college, was doing this, a statistical analysis. You just made a comment that you said you will never reach 100%, but, and even when we're talking about the survey, as we do this, this is on a one to a five scale. And there is a certain percentage within any organization that you'll have a certain group that will be highly satisfied with an organization, and then you'll have a, a certain percentage of individuals that will not be satisfied.
Correct.
And, you know, even though we strive to get to the 5.0.
Yeah.
That's probably not going to be something that we ultimately obtain. So, you know, in seeing that number go up from a 3.8, when you're looking at those representing districts that, that were, that were reviewed, was that done at the same timeframe? Or are those districts being represented in a situation that they've already been through their initial surveying phase?
No, those were, the districts that we have with the comparison slides are, have the same circumstances that you have. There's been no training, we haven't started the process, it's the, it's, it's gathering that baseline data before we start. There are a couple that, that did it a little differently, and we didn't put them in that, in the slide. So we basically said the one, let's pull in the ones that are, that are doing it just the way that we're doing it with you all here.
Great, okay. One, and you just touched upon this in your last statements about trying to make sure that you keep the anonymity of the survey and keeping it pure in that, in that respect. One point that was brought out to me when the surveys were first being done by the teachers on the campus is that they, they could take the survey several times because it wa, they weren't locked to the one time.
Correct.
Do you feel like there was any skewing of individuals, you know, by taking the survey multiple times to try to skew the results one way or another?
I would hope not. That's probably the best answer to say, but what, here's kind of the way we look at that. So that's the trade-off that we're talking about. So initially, there are ways that people could go in and take it multiple times because we're not tracking IP addresses in any way.
Right.
So we kind of said, "Let's go with more of giving, reducing anxiety, giving people more of an opportunity. If we need to modify that as we go, we can do that." The other, the other thing, in terms of the, the way that we would look at that, in terms of the district mean, the, the sample size is so large, then it probably isn't going to influence that district mean. But where we do look pretty carefully is, is if there's anything that looks odd in a department or a school, once the survey is completed, then we can begin to tease that out of it.
Right. And I, I totally agree with you. With the larger organization.
Yeah.
If that was happening, it would be minimized, but fortunately, if we can, we can check if something's happening on a school where there's more surveys coming in than there are staff.
Yeah.
Then we have a pretty good idea.
Right.
Okay.
So we, so when those things occur, then we take a deeper dive look into that and begin to determine possibly why that's occurred.
Well, and I, I asked that question specifically because I think that in itself lies the answer for individuals that may be concerned that, that the survey may have been skewed at a, at a particular campus. There's no results of that at all, so that's great.
Yeah, no, and the one, the one thing that, you know, we find, too, is, in most circumstances, you know, what we're talking about, if something occurs, like what we're talking about, it's the, it's the very small minority of what could occur.
Right.
So, so the decision-making goes with the majority, and then we figure out what to do when we ha, if we have something that's more in the minority part of a problem there, if that makes sense, where it's just, it may be, so we kind of look at it in terms of, of, of performance. We want to, we want to make decisions based on the 97% of good performers instead of the 3% of the low performance. So we, that's what we kind of really look at. How do we make sure that we make the best decision for the organization and address the problem, if indeed a problem exists?
Again, thank you very much.
Mrs. Collins.
Thank you. Dr. Pilcher, just one other quick question. On the district results, you list the number of participants as a number that's assessed and a number that's completed. Could you, since, so we get off on a strong footing.
Yeah.
What's the difference in those?
Sometimes what occurs, so we can go in, it, we just put in how many times people open it versus how many times it's completed. And sometimes people open it, don't complete, but then sometimes people open it, and then they come back to complete it. So it just kind of shows, it, we just put that indicator in there just to kind of show
Oh, okay.
A, a little bit more data of what's going on in case, you know, there, especially initially, that's what that represents.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilcher.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the 2013 and 14 Financial Futures Committee Recommendations. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. Cindy Powell will give us a report on the FFC and their recommendations for this school year. Ms. Powell.
Thank you. President Barron, board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. At the last board meeting, you all heard a really wonderful report from our Financial Futures Committee. They presented to this board 25 separate recommendations, and I'm going to kind of categorize the 25 and then give you an overview of what administration is recommending that the board consider with those. Of the 25 recommendations that had majority support, the dollar value that we were able to attach to those was $6,415,660. And we are recommending, administration is, that the board take action now on 16 of those 25 recommendations. And there are eight recommendations that we think warrant additional study before the board considers them for action. And I'll identify those in a minute. And then there's one item that's actually just a report-only item. You have before you a worksheet, and we're projecting it, it is, let's see if I can make it just a little bit larger. This is a worksheet summarizing all the recommendations. And what we have added to this worksheet is a column that says Strategic Plan Strategy. We've gone back through, and we have tied each one of these recommendations specifically back to the strategic plan. So you can follow that as we go through. I can neither go through each one of these, or, Mr. Pampa, I don't know if you want to make any comment about them, since you are the chair of the board committee for the FFC?
I would go ahead.
Go ahead, okay. And I will go quickly, and certainly we can have as much discussion on any one of them as you all would like to have. But I'll, and again, I'll just run through them very, very briefly. The ones that are highlighted in green, we have already built the dollars for those into our budget. These were things that, that were already in discussion with our staff, even as FFC was meeting in some shape, form, or fashion. And so they, the dollars for these are already actually in the budget. The first item is a recommendation that we offer additional opportunities for prep classes for SAT, PSAT, and acupressure tests for our students. And that is in the budget already. I will also tell you that following this presentation and the budget presentation, there are several presentations scheduled this evening for some curriculum initiatives that are covered here, and this is one of them, is the, on the prep classes. We also, the second item, FFC rec, 7.1, they recommended that we look at an Avid program at elementary level. That likewise is built into the budget, and what we are proposing for the board's consideration is a pilot project to pilot Avid Elementary at the elementary schools in the Lamar Network. And so you will hear more about that later. The third item, it's actually recommendation number 10, is that the district create a K-12 IB Academy, or a combination of an IB Academy and a magnet school. This is one that we think warrants some, some additional study. And so what we are recommending is that we do the research on this particular recommendation during this upcoming year, and then bring that back to the board by December 31st for the board's consideration for possible implementation next year. the board's consideration for possible implementation next year. Recommendation 36 is that we fund some after-school activities to strengthen course sequence and educational enrichment. Again, this is an item that's already built into the budget in the form of UIL academic competition programs for elementaries and junior highs. The total cost of that is estimated $247,000. We also, in addition to those, have a 21st Century program that's already in place and has been operating. That is being funded out of Title I for this upcoming year, and so that is already in the budget. The next item, item number 37, is a request or a recommendation that we fund world language immersion programs in after-school setting at the elementaries, and this likewise is built into the budget. You're going to hear a presentation on this in just a little bit. We are estimating that approximately 20 schools would participate in this program to offer French, German, Chinese, Spanish, and Portuguese to our students. Recommendation number seven has to do with the use of gifted and talented funds at the elementary programs, or at the elementary level, rather. This is another recommendation that we believe warrants some additional study, and our staff will undertake that study and will report back to the board in January 2014 as to how to best go forward on that particular topic. The next recommendation is number 40 on the list, and this particular one has to do with career preparation, career readiness. The recommendation was that we form an ambassadors' club of individuals who are graduates of our schools who can come back to the schools and attest to their experience and their careers in college. This is one that we recommend that we incorporate into our existing career tech curriculum and possibly even try to coordinate an event with College Night. This is one that we think that we can go forward and recommend the board act on this evening. Item 39 is a recommendation that we have a state-of-the-district event at each campus or, as FFC suggests here, possibly at each junior high campus for all of the feeder schools that feed into that junior high. This is one that we think warrants some additional study, and the comments section on the far-right-hand side, you'll see that there are actually three recommendations, this one, the next one, and then one we'll look at in just a moment. We believe all fall under the area of our new Director of Parent and Community Engagement, a position that is posted that has not yet been filled, and we believe that that individual can help us best shape these particular events and work with the Community Engagement Subcommittee to determine what best fits our needs. So, we are recommending that we hold on these and we study how to best implement them. We'll bring back recommendations in the fall, in October, on these three items. Item 27 is a recommendation that we have an ongoing committee of parents and/or community members at each of our campuses to serve a Principal's Advisory Committee. We actually already have a committee in place that does advise the superintendent, and then this is, again, another one of the recommendations that we think the new Director of Parent Community Engagement can help us shape, again, with input from that Community Recommendation 32 was that we enhance the outreach efforts to our non-English-speaking parents. This is, again, one of those three items that we think that the new Director of Parent Community Engagement can best assist with to make sure that what we roll out is most effective and best meets the needs of our parents and our schools. Again, we would bring that one forward, back to the board in October for consideration. Item number 12 was a recommendation that we actually share some information with the Education Foundation about how to possibly structure some of their revenue-generating processes, and this is something that, all this would take on our part is simply us communicating the information to the Education Foundation, and I will actually formally write a letter to the Education Foundation to share this information with them. Then item 12.1 is a recommendation to strengthen collaboration with faith-based and nonprofit-exempt organizations to promote a shared vision toward building a healthy community and a stronger economy through continuous engagement. This is something that is a very prominent piece within our strategic plan, and so it is something that we definitely will bring forward. Again, our Director of Parent Community Engagement will help develop that, but this is something that we are already working on. Dr. Cavassos is engaged in conversations with various groups, and so we are already working towards this end, and we don't have a financial impact on this particular one yet because those activities are not completely identified, but it is something that we believe we can act on now and go forward with. Now, item number six is a recommendation that the board direct administration to perform a study to determine if reinstatement of kindergarten TAs is necessary. This study is already underway. Dr. Carter and Dr. Hawbrick are working on this now. The cost estimate that you see here, the $1,715,000, would be the estimate to put two kindergarten TAs back at every school. That's the number that was eliminated from every school two years ago. Dr. Hawbrick and Dr. Carter are examining all of our schools on a case-by-case situation to look at their needs, and we do not believe at this time that we are talking about bringing back two TAs to every elementary school. That evaluation's not quite finished yet. We anticipate that it will be finished in time to bring a recommendation back at the June 4th meeting and incorporate that into the budget if the board so desires, but we do not believe that we are talking about adding two back at every elementary school. Recommendation number 20 was a recommendation to restore the intervention period at the junior high schools that also was eliminated. The teaming concept was eliminated two years ago. What FFC is recommending is that we add back enough staff to provide for an intervention period in the future. And the cost estimate that you see there is $1,009,000, and that would be the cost to add back 36 teachers. And when this recommendation was first costed out, we went back and we made an assumption that we would be adding back an extra class period for all junior high teachers to have interventions across all of those teaching units. And what our staff, Michelle Wilmouth, and, again, Dr. Carter and our staff, our principals, have looked at is focusing on core teachers only, not all of the teachers necessarily at the junior high school. So, that reduces the number of teachers we would need to add back. We believe we're looking at a number of 36 across all of the junior high schools, and that would cost us $1,009,000. The next one is item 21, and the committee recommended that all employees should receive, quote, "a significant pay raise." They stayed away from recommending a particular percentage, but they did indicate that they thought that the employees should receive a significant raise. The cost estimate that we made initially for this, for a 1% raise even, is $3.3 million, and you can kind of do the math on that, 1% times, you know, 2%, 3%, whatever. We have, even just this week, as we have put the final touches on the preliminary budget and have really crafted our payroll budget, we've reevaluated that estimate, and it looks like a 1% raise would actually cost us slightly less than that $3.3 million. It's $3,480,000, so basically $3,050,000 that we're looking at for a 1% raise. Item number two on the FFC list is a recommendation that we reinstate the district's contribution to, for health insurance to $260 a month for all employees. This was another item that was reduced two years ago, and we had to make numerous budget reductions. Currently, the district contributes $225 a month for professional employees who participate in health insurance, and $240 a month for pairs and auxiliary workers who participate in health insurance. We are estimating that based on current levels of participation, it would cost $1.8 million for us to go back to that $260 per month mark on health insurance. Item 25, then, is a recommendation that has to do with extracurricular and co-curricular activities, and the recommendation was that the district evaluate staffing for those activities and that that be based on the participation levels in the different activities. Right now, for example, at junior high schools, we have four boys coaches, four girls coaches, and so this recommendation would actually have us look at the number of participants in individual sports to determine if that's the right number. And then, we would set a staffing number for what is that correct number based on a formula, and we are not looking to lower the number of coaches at our junior high schools, but there may be some who might need some additional assistance with larger programs, and so that's what this recommendation was about. This is a recommendation that we think warrants some additional study, and so Michael Hill and the Athletics Department will monitor our athletics sports at the junior high schools in this upcoming year, and we will monitor participation and come back with a recommendation on what we believe is the right staffing ratio for those programs and how to best proceed possibly for the following school year. This would also, I think FFC was very clear that they were not limiting this strictly to athletics, that they think that this is something that we should look at too across fine arts areas as well, and we will do that. Item number four is increase the substitute teacher pay. The initial, we initially were not able to identify a cost estimate here, but we've worked through some information. We've gathered cumulative number of substitute days for last year, and we've been able to quantify that. What you see here, the 200, and, I'm sorry, I need to scroll down here. $224,000 estimate is actually an increase of $2 per day. Right now, we've surveyed the districts around us, and there was a chart included in your notebook with the results of that survey. We are on the low end for substitutes, but we are not grossly out of line. There are several other districts that pay $75, $76, $77 a day, right around us. So, what we are looking at and proposing for the board's consideration is that we actually increase that subpay by $2 a day, and then we also provide some training to our subs that we're not currently doing. Mr. Jones in Personnel has done some research on this. There is an online program that is developed specifically for training substitutes by the University of Utah, and there are some other districts around here that use this, and this is a program that we think would benefit our subs and certainly benefit our students as well. And so, we would like to propose that we also, in addition to a $2 a day increase, look at providing this online training to our subs, and we believe that the cost for that would be slightly less than $50,000. It's $49,875 for that training for all of our subs. In addition to that, we think that it's important to ensure that we've got quality subs in the classrooms, and so our HR department will investigate the possibility of implementing some form of an evaluation process for substitutes that we can implement in the future. The next item you'll notice, again, is highlighted in green, and this is something that is reflected to some degree in the budget already. The recommendation was that we set a goal of expanding pre-K by 50%. This year, we had just over 4,100 students enrolled in our pre-K programs across the district, so a 50% growth rate is 2,050 students, and so that's quite significant. To gain that many students, we really are talking about expanding our three-year-old program. We're required by the state to provide service for four-year-old students who qualify for pre-K. We can serve three-year-olds as an option. We do that now where we have space available and we've got need. What we are building into the budget right now are an additional 15 pre-K teachers. These would be new units, 15 new pre-K units across the district. Four of those would be in daycare centers that we partner with, and so we would serve, again, starting with four-year-olds who qualify. We do continue to see growth in that area, but then we would also have some expansion to three-year-old programs, or three-year-old services, rather. So, that is certainly a step towards that 50%. Adding 15 teachers actually means about 450 students. Pre-K students are half-day. So, you have one session in the morning with those 15 teachers, another whole set of pre-K classes in the afternoon for those same 15 teachers. So, staffing, even just a basic estimate of 15 students per teacher, that is 450 students. So, that is a good step that's over 20% of the way towards that mark of 2,050 that we would need to gain based on the FFC recommendation. The interesting thing about pre-K is if you have space available already, pre-K will pay for itself. The money that we get from state aid is sufficient to pay for the teachers, as long as we have at least about 12 kids. It's actually slightly less than that. It's probably closer to 11 kids in average daily attendance out of the class. And so, that is something that will actually pay for itself. So, that's a real positive thing for our kids and our community. The next one is 34. It was a recommendation that we commit to securing NACI accreditation for our pre-K sites. This is something that we think is going to warrant some amount of research. We've done some real basic research on this already, but we need to have some more detailed discussion with the NACI organization, largely to determine, can a full school district be accredited, or is it literally site by site? These are some of the questions that we still need to answer, and so we will do this work in the upcoming year, and we will have this report available for the board in May of next year's, what we're, I'm sorry, I've got, that's May of this year, and we have done, as I mentioned, some very modest amount of research already, and so that is the extent of what I can tell you this evening, but this is something that we need to research in this upcoming year and bring back to you. Item number 14 has to do with auditing our minerals under, our royalties under our mineral contracts. This is something that we are already pursuing. I will point out that we cannot estimate the financial impact of this because that depends on what the finding of the audit is, but anything that we would generate out of this process would actually benefit the natural gas fund, not the general fund, because all of our royalty revenues go to that fund. Item number eight, then, is a recommendation that the city and the school district partner on a stop-arm photo enforcement program where we have stop-arm cameras on our school buses. We have had one conversation already with some folks in the city police department, and we will continue those conversations. This is something that we think, yes, we can have those discussions about. One thing, I think, as I mentioned at the last meeting, that the city staff has told us, they have to be careful not to commit staffing units themselves based on a projected revenue stream. So, while there are projections as to what this kind of a program might bring in, the city has to be cautious so that they don't overextend themselves on their own budget by hiring more police officers than they can pay for with this revenue. Just to clarify for everybody on that note, the recommendation was that, not that we split the revenue, but that the city actually provide additional SROs to us. So, we'll be looking at, you know, what they would be willing to do. Does it make sense to pursue this SRO recommendation, or should we maybe in fact look at a revenue-sharing agreement? But we will continue with those conversations. The next one is item 41, and this is a recommendation that has to do with virtual classrooms and virtual instruction, and the recommendation was that the board would direct administration to provide a detailed report on establishing a virtual classroom learning environment, and there's a great deal of detail there. This is something that definitely is going to involve some study, and so we will be bringing back a report to the board in December on this particular one. bringing back a report to the board in December on this particular one. Item number 13 then is a recommendation that we look at increasing our in-house professional training and that we attempt to reduce the cost of professional development. This is something that we believe does warrant some studies, how to best implement this. As we've said before, there's a tremendous amount of training that is going to be required with our new instructional model, and so we will be studying this over the upcoming year as we prepare for that training to determine how, how this might look and how we can best implement this particular recommendation. And then lastly, this is a, this is a report item only. The FFC acknowledged the district's effort in reducing the number of low enrollment classes at our high schools, and they recommended the district continue in those efforts, and they've, again, this was simply a report item only. We did not determine that there was an additional action required on the part of the district for this particular item. So the sum of all of these items totals $6.4 million, and I'll point out that what's not in there, there are still a couple that we could not estimate the impact of, most noticeably, the one on the salary increase, because it's not defined as to what is significant. We know what a 1% raise is, but beyond that, we don't have a specific dollar amount tied to that. The items that are already built into the budget totals $723,000, just a little over that. So the total that is not yet in the budget is this $5,692,000 amount, and so I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board might have about our thoughts on these FFC recommendations, and then our thought would be that if we gain direction from you all, we will build this into the budget before the board finally adopts the budget in late June.
To somewhat orient our comments, if board members have strong feelings one way or the other about items in the white that you think should be green, please let me know, let Ms. Powell know, or green items that you think no way we should do that, speak up now. Otherwise, it'll pretty much sit like it is, and it'll come back as parts of the budget. It is entirely the purview of the board to do, talk about pay raises, so that one will be handled separately.
When you talk about pay, pay raises, would you include in that?
Insurance.
Insurance as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll discuss that in public.
I think the only one that I would say to pull out would be, and for further discussion would be the, the TAs, the kindergarten TAs. I'd say we probably should discuss that one a little bit more.
That's right now planned to be handled, similar to what we did with the guidance texts and the testing coordinators last year. The schools will get a chance to make a request, is that right?
We will run an analysis, actually Dr. Carter and Dr. Habbrik will look at the different factors that affect how many TAs they need, and, and then we'll bring back, back to the board, very similar to the guidance texts and the testing facilitators, based on their need.
So the two per school is not a one-size-fits-all, I guess that's the point, is that right, Mr. Powell? Some schools may need more than two, or some schools may not need two?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to have that, that conversation.
Separate from just, you know, almost a proven basis of, as a, as a group or whatever.
I agree, I think we should do that, and we'll wait till we get the report back from the staff.
That's correct. Oh, the same thing with the intervention, intervention period in junior high?
That's correct.
That's a big one, it's almost $2 million.
I agree, and we'll refine that, we'll refine both the TA and bring that back June the 4th, as well as the junior high intervention period to add more specificity to that.
And maybe as part of that, we could get a kind of short report on how the, adding that extra professional development period for the high schools is working out this year.
Okay, we will provide a report on that June the 4th.
Because we're, that's what we're talking about, doing the same thing for the junior highs.
That's correct, and providing a PLC time as well as an intervention time for junior highs.
Yeah, and that, then looking at the entirety of the budget, how all these things play and what, you know, I mean, we have a little bit of wiggle room from this year to next year in terms of how much, but you started adding $2 million here, $3 million here, before you know it, that, that surplus that we have right now is, is gone, and not to mention the 2.3.6, you know, teacher retirement system, you know, hit that we may be taking, that we had not planned on this year. It looks like it's coming through, so, you know, we got to see all those, how they, how they, how they play into the budget. The only other one that I was going to mention is recommendation number 40, and that's page Ms. Powell, I'd just like to maybe reach out to the, because it sounds a little bit different from the way that they structured it, and I would just like to reach out to the chair of that committee and make sure that he feels that that is in the spirit of what they were trying to accomplish before we say we vote on that, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure, we can do that, yes.
Reaching out to.
And he emailed me late this afternoon, he works for DBU, and they had their commencement today, and he was going to try to stop by here when they finish.
I understand, that's, that's totally understandable. That's the only one that I feel like it's different enough to where, in, in, in being respectful of the work that that committee has put into these recommendations, I want to make sure we don't do something different than what they were recommending. So I would pull that one out and get, get some clarification from the committee before we vote on that one.
Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, President Byrne. Ms. Powell, one real fast one is, is the substitute pay, adding that $2, I know it's only $225,000, but is, do we feel that's going to increase our fill rate? Also, I would also ask the question of, is, are we slacking on our fill rate right now for these subs, and also this across the board, because we all know certain schools have a harder time getting subs than other schools. So can we give a budget, can we offer that? And then also, I know many other districts offer kind of incentives built around policies to incentivize teachers to not take substitute days on Fridays before holidays, things of that nature, which some other districts do. Is there a way we can evolve into that?
And absolutely, we can. Your first question about fill rate, district-wide, our fill rate is 90% on subs, so, and that is district-wide, and as you noted, there are some schools that have higher fill rates than others. And so I think as we look at this process of trying to provide some training to the subs and evaluations, and look at this kind of in a broader scale, we will answer some of those questions that you just asked, and yes, I think we can move towards maybe having a differentiated pay rate if we think that that would benefit us. I know of at least one other district that was in our survey that does that. Fridays and Mondays, they have a higher pay rate for subs than they do on other days. They're handling that through the subs, not through the teacher side, like you were just mentioning, but we can look at all of that.
And I would also ask for some research, because I do know districts do have built into their HR department some incentives for not using sub-days on the highest rate. You know, hey, listen, Fridays before a holiday are our largest days. We know it is, we have the most subs. I would take that day if I was a teacher also. So if we can do things to incentivize them to not maybe take those days, hey, they're days, they can take them when they want, but if we can provide more incentives, we don't have as many subs where we start having trouble hitting our fill rate, because every time we don't have a classroom filled, students are suffering, without a doubt.
Right, and, and just, you know, to that point, we have in the past had a program, a teacher attendance incentive program that unfortunately we, we could not afford to keep a few years ago, but we also weren't real sure that it was doing what we needed it to do. But it was a program where we said that if a campus did not exceed their substitute budget for the year, then whatever the balance of that, that allotment was at the end of the year, the teachers would share that, and it was all driven by formulas based on the days, first of all, the budget was based on a formula. Everybody was gotten an equal number of days, of dollars, based on a certain number of days times the teachers at the school, and then whatever dollar amount was left was allocated across all the teachers that had days left, and it was a formula process for that. But we could not determine at the time that that was really achieving what we needed it to achieve then, so I think that's part of what we need to look at, is.
And Ms. Powell, last question on that. When we, I know we're working on this compensation study right now, will substitutes be included in part of that compensation study?
We can ask, you know, for that as a part of our investigation. I think that, you know, we've been focused more on that one up to this point, on salaried and positions and, and regular positions, but I think we can, we can explore what might be available to us through that as well.
If staff feels it's worthwhile, I think it's a good idea, that's all I have.
We could even build into MPE, Permission Authority for Principals, to increase pay on certain days.
That's correct, or if they want to keep, keep the money and cover the classes differently. Those are, there are other options in terms of MPE, and I think we, we need to keep those open, absolutely.
Mrs. Collins.
Dr. Kavasos, Ms. Powell, following up on Mr. Hogg's comments, long-term subs. Long-term subs would have a, more of an impact on student achievement, and I wonder if there's something we could look at in terms of attracting certified teachers, train, particularly in that subject, and working that into the compensation plan so that we have a long-term sub, that they, the person placed is most likely to have a high probability of having a favorable impact on student achievement.
Absolutely, you know, with the, again, the training program, the evaluation program, what we would like to do is maybe set some expectations, and maybe we could tie some higher pay to some higher expectations, and so yes, short answer, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Brings us to the preliminary 13-14 budget. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, President Byrne, and Ms. Powell is back.
She never left.
To present the preliminary budget 2013-2014 discussion. Ms. Powell.
President Byrne, board members, Dr. Kavasos, you have in your possession a notebook that contains the preliminary budget for the 2013-2014 year, and the key word on this slide is preliminary. This is the starting point for the discussions we'll have over the next few meetings on budget. As you all know, you got your packets this week. We have been working literally since January, all the way up into this week to prepare this particular budget, and I can't tell you how many people touch this budget, starting with teachers, secretaries, principals. The FFC has reviewed it, DIDC has provided comments on it, and central staff has worked on it, curriculum staff, personnel, finance, and so this is definitely an enormous effort by a lot of people, and if I could, there are three people in particular who I want to acknowledge. I want to acknowledge the work of Tony Drolinger, and Mandy Mu, and Carla Eubank. These individuals are absolutely outstanding, they are incredibly talented, they have spent countless hours, especially in the last couple of weeks even, to wrap this thing up, bring it to this point, and they, they do tremendous work, and I'm, I'm very proud to work with them, and so I appreciate their, their work. With that, this first slide is actually a summary of all of the funds in our budget, all the different funds. You can see here that our total is over a half billion dollars. Our total budget exceeds a half billion dollars, all the funds. The general operating fund, $450 million, you can see the others here, that is a, a significant operation. The estimated tax rate is the same as this current year's tax rate. We do not expect to have to increase the tax rate in this upcoming year. We will actually adopt the tax rate in August, after we get certified property values on July 25th. This is a, a, very much a preliminary look at our property values. We are estimating that property values will be certified at something above, that's $20.3 million that you see in the far right-hand column. That estimate is based on some data we received from the Tarrant Appraisal District on April 30th, and we project out then, from the point at which we get those values, what we think that the July 25th values will be. If they come in at this $20.3 billion, that would be almost a 2.5% increase over this year's values. And I think of note there, in the fall, as we worked on our initial forecast of next year's budget, we were forecasting that property values would be up a half percent. So we got our April 30th values, and they were definitely better than that. Just this afternoon, we received preliminary values from Tarrant Appraisal District, and we have not had time to take them all the way through, all the formulas, but the values themselves are already trending to be even higher than what you see on this chart. They actually look like if they hold up from where they are today, we would project that they'll be up by more than 4% when we get to July 25th. So we are watching that carefully, and that's definitely good news for a lot of reasons in the community, not just us, but we just got those preliminary values this afternoon. Again, this chart just shows tax rate history, and again, we do not anticipate any change in the tax rate for next year at this time, and you can see how our tax rate has decreased from back in 2004. It was in 2006 when the legislature passed the school finance reform that required school districts to lower their M&amp;O rate, so you can see, beginning in 2007 was the first step where we had to lower the rate, so you can see how the rates have actually come down over the years. Now, looking specifically at the general fund, this is the fund that, where we account for all of our day-to-day operations, and, and so it is the most significant of all of our funds. Just to give you a broad level overview of what's in there and what's not in there at this point, I'll go through a couple of slides quickly. The revenues that are in here are based on those preliminary, those estimated property values that we just talked about, and also based on current state funding laws. What we know is that the legislature appears poised to add money back to public education, as you're going to hear in a later presentation on the legislative update. That particular piece of, of the puzzle for us, the, the state funding piece, is a great big question mark right now, though. The state budget is in a conference committee, the House and the Senate both passed different versions of the budget, and so it's gone to a conference committee to negotiate those differences, and they are struggling right now, and there's a, a, a chance that they will not reach an agreement in the next week, and this is as late as a text message that I got while I sat up here a few minutes ago, that the next 36 hours are very critical to knowing whether or not we will have an appropriations bill by the end of the session. If we don't, then the legislature would be called back in to a special session, we'd start all over, and the fear is that we would not wind up with as much money out of a special session as what they appear to, ready to approve today, and we'll talk more about that in just a little bit. Student enrollment is projected to be over 65,700 students, that's an increase of 743 kids. 450 of those are those additional pre-K kids that we talked about a few minutes ago with the FFC recommendations. We also have already built into this budget, this is very important, the funds necessary to continue activities related to the strategic plan, our year-two activities, those total $3.5 million. This board adopted a budget amendment in September to fund year-one strategic plan activities, and that totaled $3.1 million. A number of those activities will not be finished at the end of this year, will cross into next year. It's my, or my, my projection that out of that $3.1 million budget amendment that was passed this past fall, there's probably over $2 million that is actually going to carry, those projects will carry. carry, those projects will carry into year-two. That money will not be spent by June 30th. And so, that's a big part of this $3.5 million that you'll see before us this evening. That's already been entered into the budget. These are considered one-time costs. They include things such as the facility assessment, the work on the instructional model, the research, and, and the big piece there is curriculum writing and the training, also survey work and the related training that goes with that, the engagements for competitive compensation plan, and an appraisal instrument. So, all of those are the big items that make up the year-two strategic plan cost. Also, already in the budget are what I refer to as curriculum and instruction initiatives or academic programs, as you see here. These also were things we talked about to some degree with the FFC recommendations. And there are several presentations following this one on some of these items you see here. But we've already factored money into the budget for all the things you see listed on, on this slide. Likewise, there is money in the budget to expand junior high athletics offerings. And there is a presentation that will follow this one that will provide detail on that. So, I'll let them provide that information to you. Also, on both the revenue side and the expense side, there's, they're equal dollars, $4.3 million for the energy retrofit project that this board approved in March. This is a low-interest loan program offered through the state that will allow us to upgrade some of our mechanical equipment and lighting systems and gain some eventual savings from doing that. And so, there's both the loan proceeds of $4.3 million, and there's the expenditure of those proceeds, $4.3 million in the budget. So, the, the effect on the bottom line is zero, but it does affect the total revenue and total expenditures. We also have capital outlay items. You know, we've discussed before, this is something that we had deferred for several years because of budget circumstances. But we have factored back into this budget a million and a half dollars of capital items, and we'll see a detailed list of those in just a minute. Now, what is not in this budget, as we've discussed, I probably shouldn't have added the bullet point here, there's nothing here yet for the FFC recommendations we just discussed for most of them. Likewise, there's nothing in here for a salary increase yet. So, that's what's not in the budget. In terms of new positions, what is in the budget now for new positions are positions that were identified through the campus staffing process. Where the principals come in, they meet with HR, they meet with some of the instructional folks, they meet with the area superintendents, and, and they apply our staffing ratios. And, and as a result of those, we are adding a total of 72 positions. Fifty, 61 of those are professional positions. And of the 61, 53 are teachers. 15 of those teachers, those pre-K teachers we talked about a few minutes ago. So, you can, you can see the impact here. Also, in terms of professional positions, we have staffed Adams Elementary. There are unique positions to each school that we add as we open a new school, principal, the assistant principal, counselor, librarian, nurse, and a testing facilitator, all budgeted for, for Adams. And then, we also have early college high school factored in here. This is something, it's one of our strategic plan initiatives. And, and we have factored into the budget the monies for a high school principal, a high school counselor, and a secretary to begin the work this fall that's necessary to have that program up and running. So, those, those costs are already built into, to this particular budget. So, the sum of the professional positions added here is about $3.2 million. And then, on the paras and the auxiliary workers, you can see the list here, we had a net reduction with the, a 4.6 TAs for all the schools other than Adams. And then, we did add some at Adams, and they're factored into that, that gain of 15 you see on the screen. And then, again, the early college high school secretary position that we mentioned just a minute ago. So, a total, a net change of 11 on paras and auxiliary workers. Again, total of all positions, 72.7 positions, and they totaled $3.4 million. Now, one thing I'll point out right here is that administration is still working to identify staffing needs. There are some other positions beyond what you've seen here, what, beyond what was identified as part of the campus staffing process that we are still working on. We will bring back to this board June 4th for, for your consideration. And a couple of quick points here, all the staffing levels that we just talked about, the new positions that you've seen here, and the campus allotments are based on projected enrollments and the staffing ratios that the board approved back in March. We did include in this budget, there's a little over a million and a half dollars. This is something that we do routinely, where we budget early on for surplus teachers that have not yet been placed. Teachers have contracts, so if, when they go through a staffing process with personnel and they apply staffing formulas to a school, if they determine that a school has more teachers today than they're, the formula says they're entitled to for the next year, they surplus teachers. Those surplus teachers, then, are placed into other vacancies, other teacher openings for the upcoming year. Generally, we wind up with just a handful that we cannot place. But we have built into the budget historically, the last few years anyway, some money to cover the cost of those contracts. And what we will do is, as we go forward in the budget process, as we place more of those individuals, we'll evaluate that pool and see if we can't reduce it. And this is a list of the capital needs we spoke about just a minute ago. They do total up to over a million and a half dollars. We have 20 replacement vehicles. You know, we went for a number of years without replacing buses or white fleet vehicles, and we had some that were just in pretty, pretty dismal shape. We also are replacing 27 copiers across the district. This is part of a three-year plan to replace old copiers. So, that, this, this is the second year of that replacement cycle. There's money here for weight room equipment for all six high schools to try to get them to, all to a standard. We have varying degrees of types of equipment and, and amount of equipment in our high schools. So, we're trying to, to make all of those equal, bring them to a standard. Also, a couple of other pieces of athletics equipment, a slow-motion replay system and replacement scoreboard for Carter Junior High. There's also some maintenance equipment, smaller stuff that's very important to our operation, power washers, and some mechanical recovery equipment that will help us maintaining and providing preventive maintenance on some of our HVAC systems and protect the investment we're making through our bond program. And then, also some cleaning equipment. Then, we also have some grounds equipment and a propane fuel tank. As we have acquired more of our propane buses, we are finding that it's, the, the current tank we have is, is fairly inefficient. And again, we have two more cycles of bus purchases that we know are coming. And so, we feel like that we need a larger fuel tank to reduce the number of drops that we have on a weekly basis to fuel those vehicles. Again, those total a million and a half dollars. This is actually, this is about as summarized as I can get, you know, a $450 million budget. But the first column shows the original budget for the current year. The column highlighted in yellow shows the preliminary budget for this upcoming year. And what you see here for the general fund is today, we are looking at a $5 million surplus. And I'll remind everybody that as we work through the fall, we were forecasting what next year's budget would look like, and we were forecasting a $9.8 million surplus. That assumed that current state funding law would remain in effect, and it assumed no raise, and there was nothing in there for strategic plan. So, when you take into account that we have $3.5 million of expense in this budget for a strategic plan, we're very close to what we were forecasting our budget would look like, and so, we're pleased with that. If we were to adopt the budget today with that $5 million surplus, that would go to fund balance, and our fund balance would, would actually be $157 million. We are projecting to end this current year with a surplus of about $13 million, and that, that amount has grown. We've done now two, two full-scale projections. The first projection that we did looked like we were going to end this year with a surplus of about $10 million. And what we're seeing now, as we're getting closer to the end of the year, is it's probably closer to $13 million. And I've articulated in a memo the reasons for that. We had some additional revenue for a prior year on state aid because we asked for our property values to be audited, and they were lower that year, which meant we gained more state aid. We also had settlement on a prior year Medicaid program we're a part of that generated some additional revenue for us. We had our, our normal variances on the expenditure side, and then we had some additional positive variances from everything, from energy conservation to some, some higher-paid positions that have been vacant for a period of time this year. Also, very positive trends in workers' comp and in unemployment that, that have contributed to that. So, we are projecting to actually end the current year with a surplus of about $13 million. That generates that beginning fund balance you see highlighted in yellow, the $152 million. So, again, as the preliminary budget sits today, if we were to adopt that budget tonight with a $5 million surplus, we would wind up with an ending fund balance of $157 million, a budgeted fund balance. So, very positive. This chart simply shows the history of our fund balance. The blue line is significant to us because it shows the number of months of operating expense that our fund balance represents. And so, in total, it's 4.2 million dollar, or, I'm sorry, 4.2 months of operating expense that next year's ending fund balance is projected to represent. Our credit rating agents, agencies like to see that we have two months of operating expense in fund balance. So, we well, are, are well above that. And I'll remind everybody that the board has committed to using $23 million of surplus fund balance to build a new elementary school in East Arlington. So, even after you take that into account, our fund balance is still extremely healthy. I'll move on through the other funds very quickly. We also adopt a budget for the natural gas fund each year. That is a special revenue fund that is dedicated for special projects. And this particular fund, like any of the others, can be amended at any time during the year for purposes authorized by the board. This is where we accumulate the monies from our, the leasing of our mineral interest. And so, we are projecting that we would generate revenues, primarily royalties and interest, of $1.4 million next year. And we don't have specific projects identified in this original budget. The expenditures you see here are for the mineral management fees. And so, with a projected surplus of $1.3 million, we would wind up with an ending balance at the end of next year of almost $25 million in this fund. On debt service, this is where we accumulate the dollars to pay our, our bonds, our principal and interest on our bonded debt. The thing that's important here is that we have to levy a tax each year to accumulate these dollars. And right now, as part of the estimated budget, we're looking at maintaining the tax rate of 26 cents. And we will continue to evaluate that, it's 26.1 cents, as we go forward and get closer to the, the July 25th certified property values to determine if that's the right rate. But we do not anticipate a need to, certainly to increase this rate going forward for this next year. And what you see here again is the projected budget. This represents, in terms of expenditures, the principal and interest payments that are scheduled to be made this next year. And on the revenue side, the tax revenues in the state facilities assessment that we get to help us pay those. On the construction fund, this is where we deposit in account for our bond proceeds. So, as we have a bond sale, the money goes into the construction fund, and then we spend out of that fund. So, we had a bond sale in February. Those dollars have gone into the construction fund, and we'll be spending out of that until into next spring, when we would project to have our next bond sale. You can see on here a list of the projects that are scheduled for this upcoming year. We'll have work on classroom additions, the purchase of a, of land for a new elementary school in East Arlington, and then mechanical projects, technology upgrades, and purchasing another 24 buses, propane buses, and then our fine arts instruments and uniforms. And then, lastly, for this upcoming year would be the sports flooring for a number of our elementary schools. So, again, this, this in, highlighted in yellow, it looks like we have a huge deficit here, but that's only because we sold the bonds in February that we'll now be spending mostly in the next fiscal year. So, it, it comes right back out of fund balance. You'll see, we start the year with a beginning fund balance of $53 million. And that's because the bulk of the dollars that we've sold up to this point, including this most recent sale, have not yet been spent, they're in fund balance. And so, as we complete these projects this upcoming year, we will take that out of the construction fund balance. Food service fund, this is the last fund we've got to cover this evening. This is where we account for our, our food service operation. It operates like a business. Our food service fund does not receive any sort of contribution out of the general fund. It has to sustain itself. We talked about this last year, and the same thing again this year. A, a federal law was enacted called the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act last year. And it actually, it, it, it requires that school districts maintain a certain level of pricing on paid meals. And what they're after is to make sure that the federal reimbursements that we're getting for free and reduced-price students is not subsidizing the paid meal program. And so, we and most other districts are having to increase that paid meal price each year by a minimum amount that the federal government dictates, and that's 10 cents. We've got to continue to increase our meal price each year in order to comply with this act. So, we are looking at increasing our meal prices next year by 10 cents. There'll be no change to the breakfast prices and no change to the reduced meal prices for next year. The budget for food service does include eight new positions. There are, there's a manager and six food service specialists to operate Adams Elementary. Also, those six specialists help account for growth across the district in participation, as you'll see in just a minute. We also have a request in here for one new food service maintenance position to help reduce our reliance on contracted maintenance services for repairing some of our, our food service equipment. And this chart shows the, the participation in our, our meal programs, both breakfast and lunch. We are projecting to serve over 10 and a half million meals this next year. So, you can see the, the bar goes steadily up. The other thing you'll notice is the blue portion of the bar are our meals that are served for stu, to students who qualify for free meals. And so, that continues to climb each year. The budget that we are, are, are preparing or presenting this evening for food service has a surplus of a little over $700,000 in it. Would bring their ending fund equity to $19 million. So, our next steps, and there's a lot of information here, but our next steps, at our June 4th meeting, we will finalize our, our staffing requests to the board. We will also revise the budget or continue to discuss and consider, as the case may be, FFC recommendations that the board may ask us to incorporate into the budget. These values that we received just this afternoon even from Tarrant Appraisal District, we will run those through the revenue formulas and update the revenue numbers that are in here for those. It is our hope that we will have a, a budget from the state and know the impact of that to our state funding, so that we can incorporate that as well into the budget, so that the next time you see it, it, it reflects that, the state aid that we will have for next year. next year. Also, at that meeting, certainly we'll discuss the budget and then the board will need to vote at that meeting on a proposed tax rate because we're required to disclose that in the paper for a hearing that would be held June twentieth. So we'll actually vote on a proposed rate. The rate itself, though, will not be approved until August after we get the July twenty-fifth values. On June twentieth, it's our plan to hold that public hearing to discuss the proposed budget and proposed tax rate and allow the public to comment on that. And then the board can make any final adjustments, if there are any, to the budget and hopefully adopt the, the budget that evening. We have to adopt the budget by June thirtieth by law. Our fiscal year begins July first, so we have to adopt the budget by June thirtieth. Then July twenty-fifth, we'll receive our certified values and adopt the tax rate on those values in August. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mrs. Powell, I don't know how you all do it. You've got a wonderful staff there.
It is them.
I intend for us to vote the budget on June twentieth, so y'all be here. Okay. I had, I had a couple of things and then we'll go on to the board members. The propane tank, can we get government assistance for that?
We will not on this one. There's no rebates that we know of. When we bought the first one, the smaller one, there was a rebate that paid for a big, it didn't pay for all of it, but it paid for a big percentage of that. We have not identified any rebate programs that can assist with that.
Okay.
We are getting a rebate, I'm sorry, for the, the fuel itself right now. Fifty cent a gallon, I think, is what it is rebate that we are, are getting. And that, that actually went away for a while and now it has come back and that, that's through the federal government as well.
So that's pretty substantial, isn't it?
It is.
Okay. The thirteen million dollars surplus at the end of this year.
Yes.
Does, is two million of that the unexpended strategic plan funds or is that separate?
No, that is not because what we're, you know, when we're talking about that surplus, it's not a comparison against the budget. This is just the difference between our revenues and our expenses. And that strategic plan money was not new revenue. We were taking that from fund balance. This is strictly the difference between current year revenues and expenses.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Reich.
Thank you, President Barron. A couple of quick things. The, because I wasn't here, I just was curious on the next steps as far as revising the budget for FFC recommendations approved by the board. Was, was there any that we moved over into that column to add to?
I think, you know, we went through them and, and
All of them?
Yeah. And we have some that we, we are recommending that we study further, the rest that we believe the board can act on. So I think as we work through the budget process, by the next meeting, we'll know for sure whether the board wants us to go ahead and incorporate those into the, the budget.
And we kind of removed the bigger pieces.
For separate discussion.
You know, the junior high, the TAs at the kindergarten level, the races, the insurance, those big pieces have all been removed so we can look at those individually.
Okay, okay, very good, thanks. And on the, the food service, I, I don't think we have any schools where it would affect us, but with the, one of the proposed laws in our legislature right now with any schools that have eighty percent that are on the federal food program would have to supply a hundred percent meals for the schools. We don't have any schools that are at that capacity at this point, is that correct?
I'm gonna ask the food service folks, no, no, okay, no, we do not. And I will tell you that we have provided some information. We were asked through Hillco to help them kind of get their mind around what that might mean to us.
Yeah.
And, and we have expressed that, that that is a costly program to school districts because the type of, of food item we would have to offer would be a prepackaged, pre-prepared item, muffins, cereal, stuff like that, that tends to be a little more expensive to serve.
Yeah.
And so it drives your cost up. And even if we offer it, we know that, that we would not gain enough additional participation to cover our costs there. And so we have provided some, just a phone conversation input one afternoon with Jackie Anderson and her staff did some research on that and we've, we discussed it back with Hillco so they could talk to the author of that bill about it. But I don't believe that impacts us at this time. We do have some schools where we are providing breakfast in the classroom now, but it, it is some that we know we have, not over eighty percent, but we have some very high need in those schools and we've identified where we think that it, we can afford to offer the program and it makes sense for us.
Right, okay, okay, yeah. Hoping that we don't get to that level and if we do, that's gonna be probably a million bucks a year we're gonna have to eat, I would think. But we don't have to worry about that right now. The, pardon the pun, yes, thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Didn't even realize that. On the question on the raises, is that something, just from my expectation, that we're going to do on our own? Will you, Mr. Superintendent, kind of guide us with, I think maybe we should look at this or just what, what is our process going to be this year?
I think you've already addressed that, Peter, and basically
Okay, sorry.
The board will make that kind of recommendation decision.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you so much for preparing. I, just like Mr. Barron said, I don't know how you guys put all this together. It's great. It's good to see that property tax values are going up. It'll, it'll help us out because we're, we're gonna do what we can to restore as much as we can, even with not getting complete restoration from the state, which is likely this session. So thank you very much. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Thank you.
Brings us to junior high athletic program expansion. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. This evening, we'd like to share some information about potential junior high programs and athletics and expansion of those programs. This is something that Ms. Kemp and Michael Hill have been working on in coordination with principals and other staff. So at this time, Ms. Kemp, if you will, share with us the information about junior high athletic program expansion. Thank you.
Good evening to our wonderful board president, Mr. Barron. Is that too loud? Okay. And our terrific superintendent, Dr. Cavassos, and our outstanding board. I'm here tonight to
Watering us up before you.
She wants something.
She wants something. I'm, I'm here tonight because one of our objectives of our strategic plan is to get a hundred percent of students actively engaged in extracurricular or co-curricular activities. So with that being said, I'm gonna present to you the junior high school athletic expansion. You can see that one issue that we face in Arlington is the lack of variety when it comes to athletics at the junior high level. While it's true that the variety opens up significantly at the high school level, many other school districts offer this variety at the junior high level and for good reasons. Starting earlier gets one ahead. There are many sports that the Arlington ISD could foster earlier on so that students could be competitively level with other school districts that already offer such sports at the junior high school. So it's so many benefits to the students in AISD. Martin High School tennis coach conducted a statistical survey to determine if there was a desire for sports to be offered at the junior high level and if there was an interest in which sport or sports would the students desire to participate. And from his study, you can see right here, it tells us that the largest percent of course first choice students was soccer. Twenty-eight, twenty-six point eight percent wanted to play soccer. Swimming falls out with twenty-one point two percent. Baseball, fourteen point six percent. Tennis, eleven point six. Wrestling, nine point six. Golf, six point six. Gymnastics, five point six. And softball, four point oh. This is the study that he, the survey that he did with the students. And you can see that we believe that junior high athletic programs benefit academic achievement, competency, fitness, and definitely self-esteem at, at that young level. Some of the benefits of academic achievement is stringent eligibility requirements because students, they, they have to earn good grades in order to maintain eligibility. And the desire to participate generates a time commitment to homework and studying while, and also the students sustain and improve their grades at the junior high level. Competency, you look at organization skills, these athletes become more organized as they take on the responsibility of team practices in addition to homework and studying. Time management, these athletes become more cognizant of time as they become more time organized in order to combine their practice time with their study hall time. And interpersonal skills, they become aware of the ability to take constructive criticism, have good listening and communication skills. Fitness, all, we also know that with fitness, that these kids are gonna increase knowledge of the sport, increase their skill level, also increase their overall fitness, including their stamina and their endurance. Self-esteem, they have a group and team cohesiveness, mutual respect among athletes and coaches, pride and accomplishments through their team and grades, needed and valuable member of a team, positive way to demonstrate a commitment to a group, increasing their feelings of self-worth and value, encouragement among team members, emphasis on goal and goal-setting, and it fosters responsibility. This is the things that we believe that junior high athletics can contribute. And right now, I'm gonna go through what we believe as far as junior high tennis. We're, we're asking for you to approve this. With the personnel, we're gonna use stipends, whether that's a high school tennis coach, junior high tennis coach. If participation exceeds twenty-five per high school campus, an additional coach may be needed. Now, we're gonna do this using our current staff, giving those, our current staff a stipend. Transportation, it'll take place, there are tournaments will take place on Saturdays at the Arlington Tennis Center or even at our high school campuses. Their class will be from seven thirty to eight forty-five a.m. every other day. So every a-day, they will come to the high school. The parents will drop those students off at their high school campus and the students are gonna ride that academic bus, the foreign language bus, back to their junior high campus. And of course, we know we'll have suburban travels to tournaments. And again, facilities, we're looking at Arlington Tennis Center, Arlington ISD tennis courts. Equipment, many of our tennis players have their own personal equipment. They're usually their rackets purchased by the players. Of course, the balls are gonna be furnished by the athletic department and we can look with a stipend or if we use our current, we've reduced that from one oh-three to really about fifty-three thousand dollars, four hundred on our last screen, I'll show you that. Junior high soccer, this is other sport that we're asking you to look at for us for next year. Personnel, again, stipends, transportation, playing each other on a weekly basis, scheduling one game per week. Now, tennis is every other day. Soccer will be the last six weeks of the school year, once we complete, complete our star testing. But they'll have a game for, for five weeks in April, May, city tournament the weekend after the last game. And of course, our facilities, junior high and high schools, fields and stadium, you know, we just got those nice new turf fields that those kids can play on up there. Equipment, practice balls, we're gonna, we're gonna provide that. Personal equipment, most of them by their players, get their own shin guards and all that, but uniforms will provide that. Game officials, we need practice. We're gonna begin April twenty-eighth through May thirtieth, four fifteen to six fifteen at the junior high campuses. And we believe this project will, estimate would be about a stipend of about one, one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. Our junior high athletic programs, how we're gonna sustain those, we're gonna recruit. We're gonna, the junior high coaches will give all students in PE and athletics an interest indicator form to sign up for tennis and soccer. Also, our high school coaches will be communicating with tennis athletes throughout the summer because many of these tennis athletes will be competing in these USTA summer tournaments. Tennis will receive one PE credit for the school year, a half a credit per semester, whereas soccer will be after school during the last six weeks and will not receive a PE credit. And so here's a breakdown of what we feel like that this will entail as far as expenses. You can see the teaching unit for soccer, we're gonna use our current staff with stipends. Same with tennis, we're gonna absorb with our current staff. The, the soccer stipend, we're probably gonna have two head coaches at each junior high school, one boy and one girls, which is about eight hundred and one dollars. And you divide that times twelve and you see that figure nineteen, two forty-eight. And you do that twice, you have a boy assistant and a girl assistant. Balls, sorry, let me go right back to the balls, about seven thousand to get those, some soccer balls and about eighteen hundred for the tennis balls. Soccer goals, quite expensive to get those on the junior high campus, gonna cost us about twenty-one thousand dollars to get twelve pair of goals for our soccer campus and anchors and the wheel, corner flags and all that for soccer. Transportation's gonna cost us about twenty-four, twenty-four thousand dollars. We think that it will be a hundred trips times, you know, four teams, campuses times five games times twelve campuses, that's where we came up with that figure, as well as tennis, there, there are four tournaments. Uniforms, thirty-two, thirty-two for soccer and twenty-two, thirty-two for tennis as well. And then the time for, the officials, soccer officials are gonna cost us about ten thousand dollars, ten thousand eight hundred. Tennis, there's not official fee. Time, timeframe for soccer is gonna be our last six weeks, April twenty-eighth through May thirtieth. And then tennis will be a-day all year at the high school. Soccer, four games, one tournament. Tennis, four game, four tournaments. Teams, we will have one team each, we'll have a seventh grade and an eighth grade, boys and a seventh and eighth grade girls teams. And same, same for tennis. PE requirement, of course, for soccer is, is, is NA. And so for tennis, it's a half semester, one credit all year long. The next steps for expansion is that we would like to study the implementation of, of tennis and soccer. Then we're gonna conduct another statistical survey for student interest. And then we're gonna study that financial impact of various implementation models of junior high expansion in, in future years. Study the required staffing needed for the expansion, study the facility needed for expansion, and just continue to solicit staff input for the expansion. And we're gonna make some more recommendations in May twenty-fourteen. So you can look at it, this is what the cost of, of this, having junior high soccer and junior high tennis. This is our presentation, so we're, we're looking at, right there, you're looking at almost a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, a hundred and eighty, eighty-seven thousand dollars. I will entertain any questions at this time.
Coach Kemp.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
We don't get to see athletics nearly enough.
Thank you.
We have one of the most proficient, successful programs in the state in Arlington. And we put, and, and yes, that's a lot due to you and, and the efforts that you've done over the years and the great staffs that you've been able to support, maintain, and definitely appreciate that. I mean, athletics is one of those things that everybody assumes all the money in a district goes to athletics and it really doesn't.
It doesn't.
It doesn't, guys.
We got lots of great programs. We got a great fine arts program. We spread it out.
That's right.
We do.
You know, something that I would like to, since you're here, I'm gonna keep you here for a little bit, okay? And I'm gonna share this with, with my
Okay. Martin baseball is winning nine to four, top of the seventh, so we're good. We're good.
That's it. Say that one more time so everybody can hear you.
Martin baseball is winning nine to four, top of the seventh.
Okay. So athletic, for the, for junior high sports, where, where the recommendations coming forward for both the soccer and for junior high tennis.
Yes, sir.
At the junior high level, for individual sports, do you feel like there's any others that should be entertaining at this time?
At this time, Mr. Hibbs, I'm gonna say no. I, I want to help Mr. Hill and we're gonna study implementing soccer and tennis and then we will come back to the school board in, in May of twenty-fourteen and, and give you the stats of how that, how those two programs are going.
Okay, so those that are wanting wrestling, some of these other things, we're asking to be a little bit patient.
I'm telling them to be a little patient. Yes, sir.
There is a program that goes on, I believe it's in Duncanville, that they have a non-compete classes at like a zero hour.
Yes, that's correct.
Could you explain that to the board?
What they, what Duncanville's done is all their high school sports, I think it's like golf, swimming, softball, baseball. Those kids, those parents drop them off at the high school and they don't compete. Every head coach works with them as a zero period, like we're doing with tennis. And, and so when they become ninth graders next year, they still are ahead of the game because they've had the opportunity to work with those head coaches on, on the high school campus. And so the, a bus takes them from the high school back to their junior high, just like we're doing with tennis. But they don't compete. They just, they practice all year long, they get a PE credit. That is their PE credit all year long, it's just a practice.
So that, that's something, we deal with a lot of parents that would like to see their children be able to do double blocking and show choirs different things. children be able to do double blocking and show choirs different things like that, and they, many times they'll come to us and ask how our child might be able to get a PE credit. Well, this is one particular way that Duncanville is using this. Also, at the junior high level, it gives the children an immersion into a program, whereas they're not playing those weekly games or something, they're at least getting, learning those skills.
That is correct.
And so I think that's something interesting that I would like to see.
Very interesting.
Us to continue further. I know that our discussion was what you brought forward on soccer and with bringing in junior high tennis, which I'm in support of both. I'll share that with you right now. Another thing, though, I know that, something that I've heard from a number of coaches over time, and it's with the disparity of stipends with our golf and gymnastics. Those two sets of coaches, whereas everyone else is getting a second stipend for the second season, those two sets of coaching, coaches for those programs are not in the loop at this point. Do you view that as a disparity for those particular programs or the coaches, what they're doing? From my understanding, they're coaching.
That's correct.
The same amount, if not more, than what some of these other programs are doing.
Yes, do I think it's an inequity, yes.
Okay, it's a loaded question. I'm setting you guys up here because I've just, I'm trying to get an understanding why...
A gymnastic coach begins their season in August, just like everyone else, and they coach all the way, in fact, we have two kids that are going to nationals this weekend, Saturday, and they're competing in national gymnastics, and those coaches only get one head stipend. So they've been coaching since August to May. Our swim coaches get two stipends, our swim coaches coach August, their state meet is in February, the end of February, and they get two stipends. Our golf coaches have a fall season, and then they have a spring season, and they're only getting one stipend.
Okay, we saw this disparity last year with tennis, and we addressed it, didn't we?
We addressed it with some cross-country issues.
Cross-country, okay. So that might be another area, Mr. Hill, I mean, you might wanna interject, but that might be another area that we might wanna discuss.
President Barron, Board, and Mr. Hibbs specifically, each spring, there are requests that are sent to administration for stipend reviews and things of that nature, and they have been submitted, and they are still being reviewed at this time, to request specifically a second stipend for certain sports, so that's...
You know, with those two that I mentioned, would they be included in that?
Yes.
Okay, I'm glad to know that. How about as far as stipends overall, how do we compare with other districts, say, at the junior high level?
I gave Ms. Powell and Mr. Hill a comparison of the districts, and that's where we found about Duncanville, we're just slightly, we're slightly lower overall on our junior high stipends, yes.
If we could, Ms. Powell, if it would be all right, I would like to see if we could get, for a future meeting, maybe that information sent in front of the board. I think it's just important because we don't get to see anyone from athletics very often, and I think it's important when you're here that we're looking at all of the issues and addressing all the concerns that you might have. And with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to the rest of the board.
Thank you.
Dr. Rice.
Thank you, President Barron. Couple of questions so that I understand everything, and I'll say, at the top end, I'm absolutely in favor of doing this. It's been a long time, long desire for me personally to have some type of athletics expansion into our junior highs. I was just curious, when you say statistical study versus just a study surveys, any difference or just the words you chose?
Just the words I chose.
Okay. And as far as the, you might've said this, but I didn't catch it, that the children that were surveyed, were they the current junior high kids only, or...
That's correct, that's the current seventh and eighth graders only, yes.
Okay, and what is the timeline for getting the information disseminated out to the parents and the students that are going into seventh and eighth grade for next year so that they can get enrolled in this, as well as for the counselors to have that communication for schedules?
I was hoping that this would be approved for, we dismiss school, and it will be very simple to get that information to our junior high campuses and to our elementaries to deal with our sixth graders.
Okay.
Very simple. Each high school coach would be responsible for going to their elementary school and their junior high school.
Okay, and so you're thinking there's still ample time even before school's out, then?
Yes, sir, without a doubt.
And that'll be enough to capture the parents and get their input for those kids to say, "Oh, yeah, I wanna do tennis, I wanna do soccer."
Our high school tennis programs right now are having what we call, we have open gyms, we have open courts, where seventh and eighth graders are coming up to our high schools and already participating and just practicing or just playing tennis on their own right now. We already have that going on.
Okay, okay, well, that's encouraging, 'cause I was concerned, I want this to happen next year, and I don't want to see any false data that participation might be low when it was not because of lack of interest, but because they didn't have notification, enough time to change schedules and that type of thing, but you're saying we should be good there?
We will be good.
Okay, well, that's good, that's really good. And as far as beyond the survey, what, can you tell us what is, I guess in this area, in North Texas area, although I'm curious beyond here, what are the typical junior high athletics offerings? Because I haven't looked at it, I really don't know.
If you have a swimming pool, natatorium, you can, most, several are off in swimming, several are off in golf and tennis. Those are the, pretty much the main three that several, in soccer, those four sports are the main, main ones that are, surrounding junior highs are offering.
Okay, okay.
I'm saying competitive, now Duncanville's offering a lot of things where kids just come up and practice, but playing games and being competitive, that's what they're offering, those four.
Okay.
Golf, tennis, swimming and soccer.
Okay, and with regards to, say, golf as an example, did you look at the feasibility of that as well and just determine that there's a little bit too much there, and it's easier for these two, or how did you make that...
It's easier for this two, how I came to that conclusion is, the bottom line is golf, we're gonna have to study going to golf courses, because, you know, we don't have that at our campuses, and so that's where our high school students go right now. And so there's, there's transportation issues, how do you get a kid at Arlington High School, you know, the parents gotta drop him off at Lake Arlington, and then the, we gotta have a bus at Lake Arlington, we gotta have a bus at Little Meadowbrook, we gotta have a bus at Ditto, and so with, once they get their, perfect their skills, I mean, you gotta put them on the course. And so we don't have that, we don't have a golf facility, so I would like to study that and see how we can come back to the board and discuss that.
Okay, and so obviously, it's easier for a segue into it now, using our buses that are already there for language or advanced math to take them back to the junior high, so it's a good fit.
And we have great facilities, we have facilities for soccer, and we already have facilities for tennis.
Okay, and I know, as Mr. Hibbs said, there's interest in wrestling, did you look at that as well for feasibility, or was it just based on interest, it wasn't high enough based on the survey?
It wasn't based on the survey, that's one of the things that we will study, but it's definitely wasn't high enough based on the survey.
Okay, okay, all right. And for those that, that did contact us regarding wrestling, we heard you, we definitely heard you, a lot of you.
We have great wrestling coaches in ISD.
Yes, yes. Okay, just a couple of other questions for my clarification. On the tennis program, we were talking about stipends a little bit, it's my understanding, then, the tennis coach, the current high school tennis coach or coaches are the ones that are going to be doing that.
Correct.
And so right now, if that's that zero hour for junior high, that's 7:30 to 9:00 or so, then are they typically now teaching a class or coaching high school tennis at that time? Are they losing a class that they're teaching then, or how's that?
They are typically teaching a class right, currently, they are currently teaching a class at the high school campus, that is correct.
Okay, so what's not included in here as far as budget is maybe extra staffing to cover that void for that classroom teacher?
We believe that the high school campus can absorb one section, we're talking one section per high school.
Right, okay.
One section.
Okay, and so in doing that, then, the, those coaches will also get a stipend to... They're not getting the stipend?
They will not get a stipend.
They're just rolling over, just doing a different thing during that same time period?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
That's where, that's where that $100,000 came from, we had 103 with a $50,000 in there, but that's, the tennis coaches will not receive a stipend.
Okay, okay, okay. And then on the soccer, is there any way, so, well, let me back up, with the tennis, they will be eligible to get that credit?
Correct.
That'll cover their athletics requirement for junior high?
Correct.
So the children that are interested in soccer, they're still gonna have to go through some other types of athletics, maybe do football, basketball, or...
That is correct.
Okay, and so there's no way to work that legally to have them covered under that requirement?
Not at the current time, because what that would do is that we, obviously, we play football in the fall, the high school soccers begin their soccer season November through April.
Too much overlap.
And then we have included the junior high tennis, I mean, junior high soccer from April and May.
Okay, and so in order for us to be able to have it offered with credit available, it has to be a competitive, in a UAL type of fashion then, is what you're saying, or just more time taken for it?
Right.
Okay, okay.
When you're offering credit, according to TEA, there's so much seat time that has to take place, if you will, or, it's not really seating in athletics, but there's so much class time that has to take place, and with the soccer being at the end of the school year, only, what, five or six weeks, we can't, TEA won't grant credit based on that.
Hmm, okay, okay.
And those students should be either receiving a PE credit or athletes that are in the athletic class, receiving their junior high credit.
So to expand on that just a little bit further, for the junior high campuses and other districts that are offering soccer, are they doing it that same way, or are they able to do it and basically skin that cat where they are having enough seat time to get the credit?
HEB, again, they have ninth graders on their, they have seven through nine, so they're having a competitive season, and so they play with the LD Bell schedule that the Varsity plays.
Interesting. And for us going forward, we're gonna see how this works, and then maybe, would we maybe look at something like that so they can get credit for it, or versus essentially a structured extracurricular activity?
I think it's structured extra because the way we have it now, we not only seat time, we're not gonna have field time. It rains, it, you cannot, you can't play soccer based on playing at the junior high campus every game. Those games will have to be moved to the high school where you have a field turf. The weather won't allow you.
Okay, great information. I'll yield the floor right now, thank you, appreciate it, Odette.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Papa.
Thank you, President Barron. Hey, wait, look at me, buddy's waking up. Coach Kemp, you know, love your passion, you don't have to sell us on this stuff, we, this is something that we fully believe in, in terms of providing programs for our students to drive that engagement. We put that into our strategic plan, that we understand that engagement drives performance from the students and the academic level as well, and all the, all the line items that you, that you recognize here, obviously, are part of that. So, you know, we definitely appreciate that, and again, I don't think you have to sell us on expanding programs, I think you have to sell us on why only two? We wanna do all of them, and the sooner the better. And we understand the capacity issues and staffing and facilities and all that, so, you know, that's the only, that's the only thing that I would say that we wish we could see more of them even sooner than later.
Thank you, and we will study, we will study further implementation.
Yeah, and I guess one feedback piece that I would give you guys is, you know, this being a work session, really what I expected was more information on all the programs, and kind of pros and cons and timeline and everything, and then for us to give you guys some guidance on terms of what we, in which way we were kind of leaning, and then for you to come back and make a recommendation. Normally, that's how we've done the process for these types of ideas or concepts that we're bringing up, and so I was really looking for that, to be able to give you guys some feedback. It looks like the decision's already made in terms of which sports are going, are going to be done first. I do have a couple of questions about your presentation. So the, let me go back to the survey. The survey was done by whom?
Martin High School, Coach Derek Moore, he teaches statistics at Martin High School.
This is the tennis coach that did the survey?
Yes, sir.
And did he survey all the junior highs?
He surveyed, I think, seven junior highs, so every junior high, every cluster was represented in this survey.
Okay, so one...
Like one high school, like out of Alzine Ferguson that go to Seguin, one of them was represented, yes.
Okay.
Bowles and Young go to Martin, one was represented, yes.
When was this survey done?
Middle of March.
Okay, so just recently?
This year, March 2014.
Just recently it was done, okay. See, I had another question. The tennis season, when is their competition season? Do they compete throughout the year also?
Tennis competes throughout the year, that's correct.
So they have tennis tournaments on weekends throughout the year? And one of the things that we mentioned was Century 21, and we have a large group of students that are part of the Bowie feeder system, junior highs, that have strong participation in soccer.
That's correct.
Every time that they have soccer, which they don't always have it as part of the Century 21 program, it's an after-school program, it's an everyday program, I believe, but they offer code, they offer soccer a couple of times a week, I think? And I think their participation goes from, you know...
Anywhere from 25 to 50 kids that are playing.
Yeah.
So you've got, if you have 25, you're having two teams, and if you have 50, you've got four teams.
Yeah, and what I've heard is, on a regular day, you know, there may be 40 or 50 kids that show up for the Century 21. On the days that they have soccer, they're, they maybe have 100 people that show up to play, I mean, extra, or 50 people extra for total, so huge interest in that program is going away from that feeder system, right, from the Bowie schools, they're not gonna have that.
They won't have the grant, we're looking at, and that was part of Cindy's presentation somewhere in that budget, is looking at continuing some of those efforts that the 21st Century Grant has provided, not to the same scale and regulation that we had to follow necessarily with the grant, but continuing some of that programming, 'cause we know it's valuable. And then we were applying for another grant, but it can't serve the schools that have already been served. So short answer is, we're gonna continue some of the programming, not to the same extent, but that's, that's part of the budget presentation.
And that's one of the, my interests in making sure that we're offering programs for a wide variety of students, or a large number of students throughout the year, and I think soccer, you know, from what I've heard, it's pretty much a universal interest everywhere, from every school, from every area of town, so that's kind of an easy one. I was disappointed to see that it's only for five weeks at the very end of the year. My concern is, what are these students, specifically the Century 21 students, gonna be doing the rest of the year? And so I'm glad to hear that maybe there's other initiatives to engage those students, to keep them at the school rather than wherever Alzine might be if they weren't there.
That's correct, it's an after-school programming that we're putting in the budget to continue some of the services, and the services is what's, what's critical there for after-school.
Mm-hmm. We've had a great deal of support for tennis, obviously, we got the emails, I don't know, earlier this year, and then, you know, this, this... And then, you know, this this last couple of days, we had a little bit of interest from the from the wrestling community.
Correct.
And, you know, just, I saved some of the emails, some of, I couldn't read all of them. I don't know, we must've had over a hundred emails in the last forty-eight hours. Some of the stories were were tremendous stories. Tremendous stories of success within our district, of success from people that took on that sport and went on to do very well after that. And so I wanna say to everyone that took the time to write those emails, thank you for for doing that. And again, as we've mentioned here, we will continue to study all of this. And our expectation is that we will bring more?
Exactly.
Programs sooner than later, as soon as we can.
And you're exactly right. I mean, like I said, we have great wrestling coaches and all of our coaches will like some type of expansion, but we have to start somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
And this is our beginning, not the end, just only the beginning.
Let me, let me ask you this. One of my concerns with tennis and and getting the students from, you know, to show up to the high schools, you know, specifically thinking about our our schools where we have higher populations of students of lesser means, that maybe their parents have to go to work in the morning. How, I mean, how's that gonna work? They have to get a ride to the high school?
Right, we will address that issue because if we have to, just say, if we have to take a bus from one campus to the high school, we will. That that could, that could increase a little bit. So we will address that issue because we want everyone to be successful. If parents have to go to work, that kid normally lives in that junior high tennis zone or high school, but they normally live in junior high tennis zone. So the kids are working, walking to the junior high. And so hopefully, if necessary, we could have a bus going from the junior high to the high school to drop those kids off.
But if those students are currently taking the bus to school, to the junior high, they wouldn't be able to get there in time to be be there at?
I think our high school coaches have said that they will make sure that one or two of those kids do not ride a bus. And then there's some carpooling going on in the morning as well. Like Mr. Pompa may be taking Ms. Sullen's kid and Mr. Hawke's kid on, you know, Monday, you've gotta drop them off. And then on Tuesday, Ms. Sullen's gonna take all through everybody's kids, Wednesday, every other day, and drop them off at the high school. And then the bus brings them back. So there's gonna be some carpool going on as well.
Yeah. And I'll tell you, that's a concern for me for that logistics and what by that nature, you know, how many kids, how many students are gonna get excluded from that? And if our if our goal is to drive higher engagement, grab as many students as we can, yeah, that's that's a little bit of a concern for me. And I'll be keeping an eye on that because I wanna see that if your max is twenty-five students, that every campus is is supplying twenty-five students. And if not, you know, why not?
And we will keep an eye on that as well.
Okay.
Those kids who are coming up to open courts right now will know, will know if they can get to the particular high school. Those high school coaches will work to make this successful.
Okay, thank you.
Can I dovetail onto that transportation issue before you go to someone else, Mr. Barron?
Sure.
On that same issue, Dr. Cavassos, do we, have we addressed that for our junior high children that are taking language at the high schools right now? Have we done anything to address that concern?
I think in some cases we have, very limited. But mostly it's what Ms. Kemp describes, is they they carpool or they find a way to get to the high school. That's been, and that kind of is a similar trend with career technical programs. We do provide transportation when there's a need, and that seems to diminish because they find carpools and things to get to the programs.
Okay. Yeah, I hadn't thought about that, that I I would hope that our our language kids are, that we don't have a decrease in enrollment there or a lesser enrollment currently than we could have because of transportation. We don't want transportation to get in the way, whether it's for athletics or academic achievement or anything, so.
And I'll add that that's part of what Ms. Kemp and Mr. Hill are gonna study is, are there issues that are constraints to expansion? And if there are, then is the investment more on the side of transportation?
Yeah.
And and those sort of things.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Owens.
Thank you. I have a few questions and and thank you for being here this evening. You know, I'm totally supportive of athletics and the expansions that we're talking about. Mr. Pompa, you talked about even more expansions and particularly, we did hear a lot from wrestling and we definitely heard from you. A dear friend of mine advocated to establish wrestling in Arlington schools many, many, many years ago. She passed away. She'd be proud of the advocacy that we're seeing today. So I'm glad we'll have that understudy for a little bit later on. But as I'm looking at this expansion, and I'm glad to see it, I have two concerns. One is that at the admin level, we have a tremendous amount of athletic programs with an athletic director, a really good one, in Ms. Kemp. And as we talk about, and in the past, we've had an assistant there. If we're talking about expansions that we may have a need to be looking, and it may it's probably not limited only to athletics, but I see now, if we are going to look at building these programs and maybe expanding more, we may be at a tipping point. So maybe in this budget cycle, we'd have an opportunity to examine that, Dr. Cavassos, and see what recommendation you may have. And again, not just limited to athletics, maybe other areas as well. So I'd like to point that out. Another concern about just the transportation logistics issue, what about junior high students who depend on free and reduced lunch at the junior high campus? Do they go to the high school campus? Are they going to miss breakfast in the process? Or they'll do some kind of arrangement? Have you guys thought, ironed that out?
The only thing we've discussed on that, and a great question, the only thing we've discussed is that the the kids will do one of two choices because once they get back to the high, to their junior high campus, they'll be given an opportunity to still eat breakfast before nine o'clock at at their junior high campus. We thought about asking to see if we could get them on the high school cafeteria role, but I think it makes better sense to allow those kids to eat eat breakfast when they return back to that campus.
So not surprised, but you've, so you've addressed that because I know with the junior high or any level, how important breakfast is.
It is, right.
Junior highs students that haven't had breakfast, you know, it's a hard one. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Rice.
Ms. Kemp, the thought occurred to me that for tennis, for seventh and eighth graders doing zero hour, it's okay for the seventh graders. When they transition into eighth grade, they're gonna be forced to make a choice then between language or an advanced math like geometry versus tennis, I think, right? Because it's the same time.
Correct.
That's a concern.
Could they, yes? Do you want to answer that question? Yes, could they? I guess they could.
And that's a concern that that we face right now, even at the high school. They, at some point, they've gotta make a decision as to what what they wanna do. And so that's, we're gonna provide the opportunities for them. But the kids, along with their parents and the counselors, are gonna have to make make a decision as to, okay, which which way do I wanna go? And that's the unfortunate part about it, is that the kids are gonna have to make that call.
Is there other, the other districts that are offering junior high tennis, have you reached out to them to see if they have similar offerings with language? And, you know, if they move their kids up from junior high to high school for an hour or so?
No, I have not.
I'd be interested if you could look that up for us?
I will.
To see if they, if anybody's already tackled this and come up with a workable solution. And not necessarily for this this year, but maybe. I just see that potentially being a a point of concern and complaint from our our kids and our parents that, hey, we're into this tennis thing, we really like it, our kids are achieving, they're in pre-AP, they're they're excelling. And now they're stuck back to either like for a boy going to the football track or academics. And, yeah, we can't have everything, but if there's a workable solution, I'd like to see if we can entertain it.
Just to follow up on that, Dr. Rice, what about doing it in the afternoon? And why couldn't they do do the whatever sport they're doing in the afternoon instead of doing it in the morning?
Because honestly, we don't have the the number of junior high coaches to support that. And then our high school coaches, they compete in the fall and in the spring, after school. That's when their workouts are.
What about our advanced math being taught in the afternoon? High school's out at two forty-five.
Advanced math.
Well, see, that, that, we're all chiming in here. They, they, see, guys, this is one of the great things that we have and one of the
strengths of the Arlington School District is we have so many different course, course offerings. One thing that we have to realize is the kids can't do everything. We want them to do everything or as much as their their schedules will allow. But at some point, you, a child's gonna have to make a decision of what's going to be their long-term goal. And if we're offering five, six different type of curriculum code or co-curricular type of opportunities, we're doing what we should as a district. But the child is ultimately gonna have to determine whether or not advanced mathematics, advanced languages, or a sports placement is the place that they wanna be. We we have to understand that even the child is gonna have limitations. And that's okay because they're getting the opportunity to excel in so many different areas. So, you know, I I wouldn't weigh this down and say, you know, we can't have tennis in the morning because that may interfere with somebody's languages. They're making that choice. And at some point, each child will need to make these decisions, hopefully along with their parents. And at the end of the day, that's the same thing that we do every day in our life. So we're giving, all we have to do as a board is offer out or offer up those opportunities and then allow the child to choose.
Mr. Hawke.
Thank you, President Barron. Mr. Evans, I think we understand kids have to choose. There are other ideas to be discussed. I'll just leave it at that. With that, Ms. Ms. Kemp, I think both these sports are needed. I think they're both?
Thank you.
Requested.
Thank you.
Wish we'd gone a little faster. I think we also need to start having a discussion of what's our long-term planning? What's the long-term schedule when you're looking to roll these out? Because there is concern that feels like we're rushing throwing these out. I think they need to be done this next year. You know, how are we testing them at each school? How do we know, you know, we're taking it all just based off one survey based on that? And the survey results, all I see are first sport choice. What was the second sport choice?
We have a slide on that as well. I just didn't put it in this presentation.
That's what I'm saying. I think it's, we've gotta look at the multiple perspectives. And so we've also gotta look at, with that long-term planning, I think we also need to be looking at what we expect the minimums to be in each sport. Do we know? Do we know how many each campus is gonna have in soccer, in tennis?
Do we know right now? No, we don't know. I mean, that's gonna be determined by the student interest.
So if we only have eight in soccer or fifteen in soccer, do we consider that a successful program? What are we doing to judge the barometer of how this is gonna be successful?
Obviously, we're gonna judge it by the number of teams that we have that are involved in, for tennis, you would judge it by the teams. Soccer, you would also judge it by the teams. Like in a seventh grade, we have four, four volleyball teams, we have four basketball teams. So obviously, we're not gonna get forty-four or fifty kids playing those. We could.
Right.
But we will have a seventh grade boys team. Soccer is such a popular sport right now that there's soccer is not gonna be an issue because, again, it's after school. And those kids that have played all the sports all year long, they'll have an opportunity to come out for the and try out for the soccer team. The issue is how are we gonna get those kids up there and make sure that we have the numbers for tennis? I don't feel like that's a problem with our open courts that we have going on right now. If it is, then I will address that issue. I will address it if kids are not getting there. We're gonna address that with transportation because we want all kids to be involved. We want them to to play tennis at the high school level. And for those kids that the transportation and breakfast, you know, again, that's why it's a trial. We're, we're, we're starting somewhere and we're gonna begin with these two sports and see how how it goes. I will make sure that I will be looking at data from from both of these, from both of these sports as as far as implementation and how we can improve once we begin to implement another sport.
Ms. Kemp, you said, you said another thing. I think it's, as much as it's important in playing at the high school level, it's also about introducing students to the sport.
That's right.
Some students may play it for two years and then decide, I don't wanna play it anymore.
That's correct.
That's okay. It's kinda like our career and tech programs.
That's correct.
We'd rather have a student learn they don't wanna be a chef in high school than they do after they've paid three thousand dollars and gone to a culinary arts school. They've passed up on their college and they realize, wow, being a chef requires you to be over a hot stove all day. It's a tough job. And so I think that's as much as it is. So about the competitive, I agree. I'm a little concerned, as Mr. Pompa stated, about our plan for students that can't arrive and can't deliver themselves at the school. And I understand your plan of the coaches are gonna help her. What do we do if that doesn't happen? I just, I think we need to talk through a more solid plan than the coaches are gonna recruit and find parents to drive them.
And if the carpool is not, like I said, we may have to look at increasing the budget on transportation. Because for the most part, those kids can get to Bowles Junior High. They might not get from Bowles to Martin.
Right.
So we're gonna, we may have to bring a bus to Bowles to take these kids to Martin. So that's something, that's logistic, we've gotta work out in between getting schools to kids on high school runs, the elementary runs, and and the junior high runs.
I I know it's year one. And so I I know that, but I just, I want us to make sure we're we're locked in and solid on that because then I would ask, so what's, if we're then promoting that, encouraging parents through that, which we know occurs every single day, then I would ask our attorney, what liability does the district face in those type of situations? If we are out encouraging that and not offering the transportation, do we face anything from that perspective? Because that's something the district's promoted. I mean, those are the type of questions I would ask on those situations. One thing I look at, and I know the answer's gonna be we don't have facilities for swimming.
Right.
That's a highly requested sport.
It is.
What would, and this would be a study, we know that can't be implemented a year, but what would that happen in the next year or two on, is is our facilities assessment gonna come back and relate back to something like that? What would the required needs be for the auditoriums, things of that nature, to have that?
Many of our surrounding districts do have an auditorium. So that's that question correctly. I feel like that, with that being said, if we're gonna do this, this would be the same thing. Our beginning classes are at UTA and TCC in the morning. So just like those parents are dropping them off for, at the high school campuses for for tennis, then the parents would have to drop them off. Or, again, you gotta look at buses to take those kids from, I'm just gonna say Hutchinson Junior High to the UTA swimming pool in the morning. And then a bus has gotta get to the UTAs and and take that kid, you know, back to Hutch.
And for for the situation of wrestling, you know, because we have facilities for that, it would be the junior high gymnasiums, correct?
We we have gyms, but you'd have to look at mats and all that. If we were gonna do wrestling, I would still bring those kids somehow to the high school. That's just?
And not do it at the at the junior high in the gyms, possibly in the morning?
That's correct. Now, we we could, but again, you're looking at facilities. I mean, we have the facilities. We got volleyball in the morning, we have basketball practices in the morning. So we couldn't do wrestling even at the junior high level until, and their their season ends about the end of February. So the wrestling coaches at the high school level would have to teach that, would have to coach it. And so we can't have it till March.
I think Ms. Ms. Owens had a good idea of, you know, this is, this is a lot your department's taking on. And I would be the first to say, I think your department's understaffed for the athletics to oversee it for the whole district. And so, I think adding something of that nature, you know, whether it's someone else to assist or something of that nature, I think is, as we try and expand this more, as our strategic goals are very clear
Right.
that we're expecting this type of involvement, how do we approach that type of situation? And I don't, I don't know the answer. That's something you and our fearless superintendent need to start having the discussion to go through.
You know, I love my, I love my job. I love our coaches. They are, I consider they're good, they're great coaches. I feel like on a daily basis, they're good to kids, they're good for kids. And that's a direct example of how, what my expectations are. And we're gonna, we're gonna have fun in athletics, but we're also gonna compete. I can promise you that.
I understand that. Thank you, Ms. Kemp.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pompa.
Thank you, President Barron. Just to follow up on a couple of questions that Mr. Bowie brought up. Again, tell me why you would have to bring all the kids to high school rather than teach them at the junior high? Because it seems like it'd be easier to move a coach after high school to the junior high because it's later.
Are you talking tennis?
One or two coaches then try to move a bunch of people, a bunch of kids to a high school. So, just following, following up on the wrestling. If they have the facilities at the junior high, the gyms, you need some mats, obviously.
Right.
That's not that big a deal. But then, the logistics of.
Wrestling mats are very expensive.
I'm sorry?
Wrestling mats are very expensive. So, we're talking ten thousand dollars just for one mat.
Okay, that's okay. But, I'm just thinking of the logistics of, you know, now you just have to get a coach or two coaches to the, to the junior highs. That seems to me like a lot easier to do than to try to coordinate
To do that.
carpools and buses and all that other stuff for a morning sport.
Looking at it from a financial standpoint of view only. From a kid's standpoint of view, yes, it'd be great to put all those wrestling mats at our junior high campus. It would be, you know, and bring the high school coach down to them.
Is that logistically feasible?
Yes, after basketball season. After the high school head wrestling coaches' season. Is that feasible for next year? I would prefer to study implement, implement other sports. I feel like right now, if we're gonna, we have to begin somewhere. And, that's the whole, that's the key. We've gotta start somewhere. We haven't done this in I don't know how many years.
And I, and I think that's part of the reason that I would've liked this process to occur first. So, we could, you know, and this is the way we work. This board, this, I really appreciate the way, the way this board works. Where we kind of feed on each other's questions and ideas and lines of thought. And then, at the end of the day, we really end up coming up with a better idea than what we started with. And, you know, the way that this process worked today, where you already had a decision made before we kind of processed it. Because, as you can hear, we're asking, I think, some very valid questions.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, and let me, let me just say, for disclosure purposes, I have no dog in this fight in any sport. I want to expand all the sports. My goal is, what, which one? If we're gonna do two, and again, soccer's kind of a no-brainer because it's universal. There's interest across the district. If it's a second one, it's about which one makes most sense. And for me, it's which one are we gonna get the most participation from? Which one is gonna drive the highest level of engagement all across the city? And I want to make sure that I'm very clear about that, all across the city. Listen, my kids at, over at Young Junior High, carpooling is in our, in our blood. We do this every day. You know? I know that in other parts of town, they, I mean, especially in East Arlington, they're very dependent on the buses, on the, on the bus transportation, and the breakfast at school and everything. And so, again, it's my concern if we're having to try to encourage carpooling over there or something that they don't traditionally do, or is that gonna be more difficult than saying, "Okay, let's spend some money on some mats and let's get these kids," especially, and then you're talking about the cost of mats. Well, what about the cost of running all these buses? You know, if it's easier to just run the coaches to the junior highs in the afternoon, that, you know, why wouldn't we do that?
Again, one of the things is that we have gotta consider is that each one of the high school coaches are coaching a second sport in the spring. And so, high school is out at 2:45. They're into those second sports up until 5:30, sometimes 6 o'clock in the afternoon. But, the junior highs, they're out at 4 o'clock. And so, they would have to sit around until these high school coaches are done with their second sport and then go over to the junior high to work those kids out. And so, that would be one of the concerns there.
And I just, I talked to a couple of the wrestling coaches, and from my, from their feedback, that wouldn't be an issue for them to teach, to coach those kids, you know, right when they get out of the junior high at 4 o'clock. And I don't know their schedule. I don't even know when the wrestling season is. I mean, I don't know anything about wrestling. But, you know, they've contacted me because I replied to some of the emails. And, the feedback was, "Hey, listen, we could do this at 4 o'clock." Either they can come up here or we can go down there. So, that was their feedback to me. And I'm just relating that to y'all.
Two of our head wrestling coaches are assistant track coaches. So, their season goes to the middle of April. One is an assistant, one is an assistant softball coach. So, he's in another season. His wrestling season is ended, but he, they have other responsibilities. I'm just trying to think. We have, obviously, we have one that's a volleyball and a head wrestling. So, that, that wouldn't be an issue. So, I think the whole issue is not all twelve of them, six boys, six girls, could coach after school once their season ends because they are coaching a second sport in the spring.
And like I said, they're, these are all good ideas. I mean, we want tennis, we want golf, we want wrestling, we want swimming. I want something. If there was something that I was gonna personally advocate for, it'd be swimming. My daughter swam for, you know, eight years or something like that. And she was very successful, and she's done great. And so, I have a passion for swimming. I know that in terms of facilities, that's not, that's not within the next few years. I mean, even if we decided to fund an auditorium, it takes time for the bonding and all that.
Right.
But, you know, I'm just throwing out ideas in what is gonna drive the highest level of engagements? Where are we gonna get the highest level of participation from all our students throughout the city?
Thank you.
Dr. Rush.
I would, Mr. Pompa addressed most of the questions that I had. I think something to put into the mix is what about the mornings on the wrestling side? Just like with the tennis coaches being able to do that in the mornings? Would the, would the wrestling coaches be able to do that? And then, are we looking at in the morning hours, same situation, where we would have one or two more classes that would have to be staffed at the high school level then? Are they currently teaching in that hour versus coaching?
That's the issue right there. The high school coaches, they are, in most cases, they teach two academic classes, and then they got a conference and an athletic period. Well, if we give them another athletic period, i.e. junior high wrestling, then that's gonna have a negative impact on the, on the overall teaching schedule, which would, again, require more teaching units. And that's one of the things that we wanted to study, you know, the impact that that would have and in staffing and the best way to push that forward in the future for more discussion.
So, right now, with the tennis option, we're looking at one unit that you feel the schools can absorb at the high school level easily. With a wrestling option, there's two units, and that's not that easy, is what you're saying.
Most, and correct me if I'm wrong when I speak, but most of our high schools have three tennis coaches.
Correct.
And so, we feel like we could do it with tennis because there are three coaches that coach tennis at the high school level.
Okay. And I'm, yeah, I'm for exploring options. I, I would like to be able to see where we could absorb those three classes at the high school level and do wrestling and tennis, and the soccer as the extra in the afternoons in the spring. So, yeah, more thoughts? We're all chomping at the bit to do as much as possible. I guess that's all I have. I thought I had something else, but I don't remember. Thanks.
Mr. Hibbs.
I'm just gonna close it out with this, and I think we've all talked it to death. But, choice is a good thing.
Right, it is.
I don't care if you're choosing between a foreign language in the morning or if you're choosing to play a sport in the morning. Choice is a good thing.
It is.
And we're offering it. Coach Kemp, would you agree with me right now that kids that are playing athletics in the afternoon, after athletics is over, those kids are finding ways home? After games, they're finding after, afternoon practices and whether it be volleyball, football, basketball, track, the primary sports that are being played, kids are finding a way home.
That's correct.
And they're doing it through carpooling, they're doing it through all these other things. So, liability, if that was an issue, it would've already happened a long time ago. So, what we're, what we're talking about now is we're giving children the choice to participate. And, you know, it would be great if we could have everybody delivered home on a bus, but it's not, it's probably not gonna happen even in the best of worlds. So, I think what we come back to is, you brought a good proposal forward. I think there's, we're going to be investigating the opportunities for these additional. And if it's the will of the board and they wanna add wrestling, you know, that's, that's something that we'll be talking about here in the future. What I, what I am excited about is that you have been able to come forward and, and start this dialogue. I'd like to see this type of dialogue with athletics and fine arts to happen in front of us at least, at least once a year.
Thank you.
So, you have that, that opportunity to speak. So, I appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Do I get to say anything?
For our wonderful board president, you have the floor.
Thanks, OJ. Unless anybody's got any strong heartburn about this, I'd like to go ahead and just, for us, to have the superintendent put this in the budget. Or, we could bring it back next time and vote on it and spend another couple hours. Well, anybody have a problem with just going with the proposal? And certainly, you'll study the things you said you were gonna study.
I will.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Item E. Eighth grade Career Technology and Higher Education Investigations Course Update. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Barron. At this time, we'd like to provide an update to our C T H E I course. I think that's what it's called. And Craig Wright has been working with his staff and teachers to develop the course. And this is the eighth grade required course as part of our strategic plan. And so, Mr. Wright has a brief presentation.
I would never want to compete with our esteemed OJ Kemp, but I would like to say, good evening, President Barron, members of the board, Dr. Cavazos. I appreciate the time to talk to you today. I asked two of my colleagues to attend with us tonight because I wanted you to recognize their efforts. And Ginger Polster, that you've met before, has been responsible for the development of the course we're gonna talk about this year, in addition to the FIRE Academy. He's done an outstanding job. And I wanted you to know also, we have collaborated with our instructional technology department. And Gabby Crum has been assigned to us to help, and she has helped all year as we move forward through this course. And we'll talk a little bit about that this evening. But, I did wanna recognize them and the hard work that they've done. I assure our friends in our community that they're getting their mileage, their money out of the mileage. They're paying our staff at AISD, I promise you. And I want to say thank you very much for their work. It helps make us successful and we move forward. Tonight, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about our, where we are on this part of our involvement in strategic plan. We're working under the similar issues that we've discussed tonight with engaged students, inspired students. And we're looking for students who will develop an individual plan for their future. And so, what we're talking about is their high school future and their post-high school future. And if we can involve all children in their individual plan and make children aware of all the opportunities being discussed tonight, and some more opportunities are gonna be discussed, the main focus of this course is to make sure all our students know about those opportunities and their parents, so that they can make choices to participate like has been discussed and make their choices of what meets their family needs the best. Our, we believe every student can succeed, and we wanted to ensure that all students fill out and complete their individual six-year plan to guide them through high school and to their future. In this course, the students will have opportunities to learn about themselves and career opportunities, and what their interests are, what their family goals are, and to fully understand their personal strengths, interests, and the skills they need to be successful as they move through their life. Our timeline is, we are just about completing with the curriculum. The group has worked. We have two counselors, two counselors, four teachers, part of Gabby and her staff and Ginger, working together. And we wanted to partner with our counselors to make sure they're involved in the program that we're developing. We're, they've completed the curriculum. They're going back, fine-tuning that curriculum, checking websites, making sure the parts and pieces they've put together are still current. In this June, we will have a two-week training for our teachers on the course and the contents of the course. We will have counselors involved in that because so much of this course, we wanna make sure we're current with the counselors. The counselors are current with us. We have a makeup session scheduled for August. Class starts each six weeks before the new six-week start. We wanna bring the teachers back together for a day, look at the next coming six weeks, debrief on the last six weeks, and move forward in evaluating the course and our success rate and keeping current. We have a schedule to maintain. We'll talk a little bit about that. We also know each year in June, we'll need to come back together because this program will change based on the changes that come across in the school district. And of course, our friends in the legislature may make changes for us. And we'll need to monitor and adjust and bring our course there. I did wanna know, the board to know a little bit about some of the issues you've heard tonight. We did have to cut back on some courses, in some cases eliminate courses to make space to do this in the curriculum. But, it was important to me personally, we did cut a career and technology course. We cut some back. We cut technology applications. But, the technology application skills, we believe in career technical education, those are very, very important for our kids. And so, in the, from the beginning, we worked with the technology, instructional technology department to come together, how could we collaborate together? Make sure the kids are getting the technology skills they need to be successful. The safety skills, how to interact in the media that they do. And then also implement the challenge that we had been given to get the kids ready for high school. So, that collaboration has been very successful. I'm very excited about the feedback, the input we have gotten from the instructional technology staff. Our course would not be as rich as it's going to be had we not had that collaboration. I'm very, very excited about that. Some of our parents, you know, they hear the communication piece. You know, the board knows is always a challenge. And I think some of our parents don't really realize what we're trying to do, the depth of that collaboration. It's not just about careers. It's about academics, it's about success, it's about personal success. And then that technology piece, that all kids are gonna live, or they already do, live in a technical world that I didn't even know about. And so, that preparation for that, there's a lot that goes into helping kids understand that. Some of our students who have interviewed for some of our other programs have found out how much information a future employer can find out about you and your experiences in social media. It's all out there and it stays out there. Those things kids need to know. Parents need to know their kids are being taught those safety issues. Part of what we're talking about here for this course is bridging to high school and getting our eighth graders ready to learn about all the things that are available. And you heard tonight, all the things that are available at our high schools and to make sure kids and parents are aware of these opportunities. One that's fascinating, every time I talk to a parent about it, I get, "Oh, my goodness," is the ten thousand dollar accelerated bachelor's degree between TCC and UTA. And we have plenty of opportunities in our districts to participate, structure programs that target that scholarship opportunity and challenge our kids and to make sure that they're aware of those opportunities. We're really focusing on a highly engaging course. That's one piece of our engagement, technology engagement that we have infused in the course. We are planning and problem-solving field trips. We certainly want them to see our friends at TCC and UTA that are right here in town. It'd be very exciting to have every child walk through the doors of those institutions. I remember when I worked at one of our alternative schools, we would send kids, "Go look, go look." And they would drive up and not get out of the car because it was, it was so big and unusual. And they'd never seen it. Beautiful facilities. And so, we decided then that we needed to take them. We'll walk them through the door, meet them, introduce them to people here. You come back by yourself, you're gonna meet this person who you've met them already. So, those kind of activities are, teachers get excited about that. That's why they got in the business was to help kids. And it's to easy sell teachers about this course. We would like to expand our big idea entrepreneurship program we have with the Chamber of Commerce. And so, we could do that for all eighth graders in this course. The technology-rich environment, we've spoken about, the career guidance assessments. Those come in about the third, six weeks. I have a slide that'll show it, so I'll be accurate. But, the, who am I? But the who am I, where am I going, and how do I get there? You know, the life cycle, the career education. It'd be interesting to study how many of us, how many jobs the people in this room have had over their career. Career involves multiple jobs, multiple career paths. Especially for these kids, they're estimated to work 45 years. They have a long time doing the workforce. They might as well be happy and excited like you've seen people today about their jobs. Our first six weeks, you'll see, we'll begin with our technology piece. We want to teach kids how to use our technology. And then throughout the rest of the year, that's what they're going to be doing, is studying careers and using the technology we're going to teach them about, how to do that. Then we're going to move into electronic portfolios, the career clusters, the interest and aptitude assessments that we talked about. Third, six weeks, they'll start their presentations, using their multimedia skills about what they learned about careers. And then in the four, six weeks, we're pushing to get ready for the counselors to come in, the high school counselors to come into the eighth-grade classes. And the fifth, six weeks, they'll do some interviewing, some resumes. We always get questions about banking. Why do we not teach children banking? We'll start with a little bit of banking, a little personal finance. If you want to continue your post-secondary education, there's lots of ways to do it. And in the six, six weeks, we want them to begin applying their technology skills to a business. These kids are going to market themselves personally, just like a business market sets products to the love market. So we want kids to get ready for that, and it's very exciting. We wanted you to see, and I was curious how it would show up. Thank you, Mark Murray. We wanted you to see our branding of the four-year plan that kids are going to do. Now, the kids will do this on an interactive PDF. They'll just fill it in and it'll go forward. But we wanted to brand it in A I S D's four-year high school plan. Then we have a signature from the student, the parent, the counselor, and another significant advisor, mentor, adult, that they can discuss their plans with them. And we have it separated in academics, electives. We have summer school opportunities here. And we just, tonight, at the work dinner, we were discussing redoing this for the eighth grade column, because our eighth graders are taking high school credit courses. And we want to encourage that where it fits for that family. So we've already been problem-solving and monitoring and adjusting as we go tonight. But every kid will have one of these, every student will have one of these filled out. We included some examples just so that you could see some ideas. This is just a regular high school graduation plan here. This is our A P. You can see the kids taking all advanced placement courses. This one is technical dual-credit, since that's new for us and new for our counselors trying to work that in. You can see that opportunity for kids here. This is a three-year plan. We're very intrigued about acceleration. You know, we're talking about the whole process for all our kids. So you're seeing a three-year graduation plan. And to do that, the kids need to take some summer school experience. And this is really what got us talking about eighth grade, high school electives, credits, excuse me. So we need to have accommodation for that. So there's a possibility there. We'll also do one for our early college high school kids. This is a 24-hour, the kids who participate or are looking to participate in the 24-hour Maverick program, $10,000 bachelor's degree. Here's a 24-hour getting, and this is what we're trying to do with our dual-credit technical kids, is help them learn how to be set up for advanced degrees if they were interested in that. And then this is our two-year transition plan. We'll probably monitor and adjust on this one, too. This is the, our concept for how kids would plan their post-secondary experience. We know that eighth graders will change their mind. We know that they think Ferraris just show up as a birthright. Porsches, you know, there's a, there's a way to get those things in America, but they need to be planned for. So this will change. We're talking to them to fill these out, to plan to transition away from us. And that's a big piece in the kids' life, parents' life. Parents are very happy when their children get that job that pays insurance. And while they love them, they have a different abode to live in. So we can answer any questions you'd like. It's been a late evening for everybody, but I do appreciate the opportunity to share with you. We're very excited about the opportunities, and I'd be interested to see how our feedback goes. This is, this opportunity for us in the career and technology department is right down the line with good career education, getting kids attached to their educational opportunities. And so we appreciate the opportunity. Very excited.
Dr. Rice?
This is fabulous.
Thank you.
I want to clap for you. This is fabulous. I, I love it. I love everything I'm hearing. Thank you. You guys put a lot of thought and work into this and address the concerns of combining the technology applications in with this whole C T H E desire that we've had as a board. It's, it's very exciting and including the, the banking things in there, the financial sense, that's, yeah, that is something people have been talking about for a lot of years. It's perfect. One question on bringing people in to discuss different careers. How are you going to make that determination and just who's, who's available? Are you going to work with the Tarrant County workforce on what's needed in the area? Or how, what are your thoughts on that? Or have you gotten there yet?
Yeah, there's two pieces of that. One is the Chamber of Commerce currently helps us with the Arlington Scholars Program. And Beverly Davis and my staff coordinates those phone calls, gets people set up, gets teachers connected to a business person. It's always better when they make good, fast friendships, and then we step out and each year they talk to each other, when am I going to come talk to your kids? So we'll continue that. Obviously, we'll have to expand. We need speakers. We'll work with the Chamber of Commerce on that. And help me remember the second part of the question. I broke it, too.
That was essentially it, if you're going to work with Tarrant County workforce. But the Chamber of Commerce will already be doing that as well, and so.
And they've been great partners for us. They are eager to help us work towards that end.
Yeah. I, I think this is, this is wonderful. The, 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 the high school plan that will be put in place, is that something that is going to be done by the counselors or in partner with the teacher of the course? Or how, how, what's the logistics of that going to be?
There's a little timidity about that. You know, high school registration is very complicated, scheduling. But what we're asking our eighth-grade teachers to do is share information with the kids. And we want to share information at home. Because we've had a structured course that the kids can participate in, they will be more knowledgeable. And then we also work, there, on the slide there, I think the four, six weeks gear up is a PowerPoint we helped counselors produce. And then the counselors go into the eighth-grade courses. So that's why we have counselors on this committee to work together to facilitate that process, so that our teachers are sharing good information, that the counselors tell us to share accurate, good meaning accurate, and work that whole piece together. So we have thought about that, and we're planning. We're looking at regular feedback cycles. The counselors are realizing they need to talk, you know, all need to communicate more. There's so much, so many. So yes, there's a group working on that.
Is there a mechanism somewhere in here that's not delineated by a bullet as far as bringing the parents in or having a lot of interactivity with the parents, maybe even a workshop or two throughout the year that, hey, this is what your kids are going over? Here's the, besides the usual, hey, you're going to college, or high school next year, and here's what you do, which for me personally, as a very active parent, I found myself leaving pretty much lost in those orientation sessions. And this would be a good opportunity to get the parents and the kids together with the school to be able to say, you know, A C T, S A T, career, college, et cetera, and get the parents working together with us on that. I don't know if that's something that you've talked about.
It's a very, it's, it's an excellent idea. And Sam Nix at Carter Junior High last year contacted our department, and Beverly Davis went out and worked with, had a parent meeting and did exactly what you're talking about. Fed right off of the Chamber of Presentations. And I'm sure as the word gets out and the principals, you know how competitive principals are, they hear a good thing at one other campus, they want it at their campus. So we suspect, yes, that they'll all play right there together.
That's great. Because that, that type of thing in, when you go to private school, you get a lot more of that as far as with the parents. And they'll, they'll come in for a little seminar, or they'll bring somebody outside from, outside in, whether it's for child psychology or, or career choices, behavioral things for your kids, whatever it is. And this, to me, for their, preparing their children for high school, for after-high school would be one of those opportunities that we could really showcase in our district as a great advantage.
We are more competitive than a lot of our parents understand.
Yeah.
There's a lot going on, but.
Yeah. This is great stuff. I'm so excited to see this. And obviously, there's going to be some hiccups and bumps in the road because it's a new rollout. But this is, in my opinion, this is exactly what we had in our mind when we created the C T H E term in the first place.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Papa?
This is a, going to be a requirement for all the students in junior high, right?
Eighth grade.
In eighth grade?
Eighth grade.
And so is there going to be some conflict with some of the students that are trying to get other credits? For example, if they're trying to, like my daughter is taking high school Spanish and high school math, and because of the requirements that she has to have for junior high, I don't know that she'd be able to do that if she had this additional class to take. And then I think I heard, I heard other parents saying, hey, my kids aren't able to do some of the things they wanted to do because now you're requiring this particular class.
I would phrase it that the wonderful thing about the Arlington School District is we have so many opportunities for our kids that they can't do them all. And so I'm not being smarty. The answer is yes, that we'll, the kids will have to make choices about what they'll do. In the past, we had a course in the career and technology education that was required when it started. It was about careers and exploration. And over time, there were, some schools did no longer require it, and some still were. And so we see less anxiety at those junior highs about fitting this in, a required course as an elective, than we do at schools who had no longer required every eighth grader to be in the course. So I have met with some parents and visited about the course. So they're very appreciative of elaboration of what the course was versus what they thought it was. And to spend time with them, there are still some who are, you know, high flyers, high achievers that push, 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 are going to have to make some choices, you know. On our end, we can explore summer school opportunities. We can explore other hours. But there's a lot we can talk and discuss and just explore. But yes, this, this will take a, one of the electives at eighth grade.
Yeah. And then, but I guess the point is then, that really then isn't a choice, because they don't have a choice whether to take this class or not.
You're correct.
It's a requirement, so.
The strategic plan says all, what I kept telling the parents was the strategic plan says all eighth graders will. And so that's, that's, you know, I would strongly advocate for the viability of the course and that the kids need it now. You know, the parents are the parents.
And so we've faced some of this with Avid and other programs. And so principals and Mr. Wright have been, they've been collaborating on ways to offer courses. Now we're talking about after-school and before-school, kind of the same things we've talked before, and other ways to offer the courses. One junior high, for example, more kids want to take Avid than could fit it in their schedule, so they created a zero hour for Avid. And so all of a sudden, you have more sections for Avid available for kids. You've been looking at that.
We have.
With both concerns from parents and things. But that's part of expanding those opportunities, is to find different ways of doing it. And letting teachers teach another period and paying them and things like that.
And I agree. I think, I think the class is great. I think there's plenty of merit for it. And we definitely want to drive that engagement and having the students have a plan, you know, for when they get to high school. But at the same time, I don't think that our idea was to prevent students from overachieving.
Correct.
I don't, I don't think that was something that, you know, sometimes there's those unintended consequences in some of the things that you do. And I think that anything that we can do to facilitate those students that say either, whose parents say, you know, we don't really need this, or yes, we'll do this, but also give us the, the ability to continue to overachieve and get ahead and that kind of thing. And so wherever we could do that, because I don't think there was the intention of this board to limit those students that want to excel by any means. I don't think we want to do that as a board or as a school district. We want to encourage that. We want to nurture that. And so, you know, I think it's a great class, but at the same time, we have to make room for those students that want to get ahead as well. So whatever you guys can do to work with the campuses or the parents, you know, I'll be definitely supportive of that.
We have worked with some 51 this school year, during seventh grade this year. And we try to come to a win-win with those parents.
And that's why you see some course consolidations and elimination, is because they may have been in those courses, but now we've consolidated, consolidated the courses so that they can take advantage of the curriculum, basically. Summer school is something we have to look at as well. This really, and this is probably not the, I'm not going into too much detail, but this is driving a look at our junior high course offering and curriculum. And Michelle Wilmot-Sonato is working with the junior high principals to look at what do we double-block and why do we double-block some things? Can we open up more opportunities for students in the schedule? It's leading to a bigger discussion with junior high. We know that the opportunities are limited with electives, but we also know that there are some opportunities for high school credits to be pushed down to junior high in the future. And so how do you negotiate all that within a high, a junior high schedule is something that is driving that discussion right now, in a good way. Because we have to offer more opportunities for students, but also make sure that we're examining our curriculum offering, our design, scheduling, things like that.
Thank you, President Byrne. Mr. Wright, there, there had been some discussion that parents were saying their kids took this class already in seventh grade. And I don't know, I don't know what's offered in that seventh-grade class. Is it anything compared to what's being offered?
That particular class, we have an outstanding teacher.
Right.
Who goes above and beyond in that particular instance. And they took it for two semesters, which typically it's a one semester course.
Okay.
Now, this is very intentionally rich in technology ways, in a structured, formatted way about our challenge, which was getting kids ready for high school and career pieces. So I would say, knowing what I know, that no, those children didn't take the same course.
Okay.
Similar. And there were some similar activities, but not exactly the same.
Okay, thank you. And I think going off what Mr. Papa said, and Mr. Papa's got a point, we have to, I think this course is valuable enough for every student to take it. When we all talked about this originally, we all had the discussion. I think we also have to be flexible enough that if we have to, from the superintendent and Mr. Wright's, make some adjustments this year and say, okay, you've already taken one at that particular thing. It's pretty close. You've already developed your eighth-grade plan. We do have to have some flexibility in this first year, because this is, as we like to say, a trial year for this class. I think it's going to be outstanding. I think it's going to go forward and be a model for probably not just our district, but the entire state is going to use, because they had discussions about that in the legislature this year of forcing schools to add this eighth-grade class. And we were already ahead of the game by developing this ourselves. So I, I would just encourage our superintendent and yourself to, hey, we're okay with having. If we have to in the first year have some flexibility, we have flexibility. We understand people, parents do start planning things out very far in advance. And if we can't have flexibility in this first year, I think that's something we could do.
And, and we've had those discussions, Mr. Hogg. And also, how do we accomplish the outcome if you already had some of the course content and get some of these plans this year, like you said, maybe without the course, but if you've had the acceleration? So Mr. Wright's working on that?
We've met with, I've met with the parents, Mr. Evan was with us, and we met with the parents, some of the parents, talked with the principal. So I think we can take care of.
Would there be an opportunity to, for a seventh-grader or high achiever to take it in seventh grade?
I don't see any barrier to that. We would need to look, I would need to double-check with Ms. Smith, make sure the credit structure that we have set up is in place, but I don't.
Because that, that could be an option here.
That was one of the things that got tossed around. You know, with all those, we can certainly explore that.
Okay. One of the F F C recommendations was to include graduates to come visit campuses as part of a program. Could graduates be added to that visiting speaker program, and we could double-dip there?
You have good ideas. We are thinking, we, Beverly Davis, who's not here with us tonight, she, she does the newsletter that you read. She does that, and she goes out, meets the kids, and she's keeping a list of students that teachers have been recommending and trying to keep contact lists so that as their future grows and blooms, we're inviting them back. But we have a contact, a way to do that. So I think that's the best thing that we can do with our kids and see upper-level kids. If they're kindergartner, they see fifth graders. If they're in high school, junior high, they see the upper-level kids and get some time to see, here's the successes I've had, here's things I would do different if I could. I think that would be.
I know that Mr. Hogg just loves to go out and talk about healthcare management.
It's very important for all of us.
With the kids.
But, you know, your, the leadership program that y'all have with the kids in, at the board level, there's many opportunities for that.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all for the time to visit.
We are rolling now. We got a vote for it's hot in here. All right, we've turned the page now. Item F, elementary initiatives, Avid, U I L A plus, and world languages. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, President Barron. This evening, we'd like to present just some initiatives at the elementary level that have been discussed with principals and some teachers. And we'd like to give you an update on that. And Dr. Hubrick will have a brief presentation. Dr. Hubrick.
Good evening, President Barron, members of the board, and Dr. Kavasos. I will begin with our rationale. Avid Elementary supports our strategic plan in that 100% of students will graduate on time and excel at their school of, school or career of choice. Also, strategy 2.4 to implement higher education partnerships. What is Avid Elementary? It's a foundational component of the Avid college readiness system. It's sequential, foundational. The organizational resources are intended for the elementary teacher who teaches all ability levels in grades K through six. Avid strategies and philosophy of educational opportunities is threaded throughout the school day and across all grade levels. Implementation is a two-year process that begins with summer institute and is accompanied by in-district coaching cycles. Avid empowers students by helping them build academic skills, individual determination, social adaptability, all of which contribute to students' college readiness. Avid Elementary is based on the same learning foundation that underlies the secondary Avid elective. Avid Elementary is embedded into the daily instruction of all elementary classrooms across all grade levels to impact school-wide structures. Avid Elementary is not intended to be taught in isolation or within elective setting. Components of Avid Elementary. First component, student success skills. We teach students how to do school or teach them the hidden curriculum. Component two, organization. Students will learn how to use agendas and planners, notebooking as an organizational tool, note-taking strategies, time management, goal setting. Component three, the WICAR lessons. They're sequential, progressive lessons that incorporate writing to learn, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading to learn. It provides partnerships through classrooms, grade levels, the site, the district, the families, the community. Targeted focus areas. All students will participate. Avid Elementary develops students' organizational skills, instills student success skills, inspires students' belief in academic rigor and success, smoother transition and increased articulation across the feeder patterns, and helps to identify students for Avid elective. The research. Avid Elementary is emerged in the research of Dr. Carol DeWick, one of the world's leading researchers in the field of motivation. She is a professor of psychology at Stanford University. Embedded in her research, she believes that Avid Elementary implementation resources, trainings, and philosophy are all grounded in the idea that the growth mindset can be taught to students, and it is through the growth of mindset that Avid students succeed in following their dreams and filling their aspirations. As well, Avid Elementary also uses the best teaching practices and research findings of Marzano, Gadyen Dean, and what works in classroom instruction, which has become critical to the entire Avid system. There are four essential elements of Avid Elementary. The first one being instruction, which is writing to learn, inquiry, collaboration, organization, reading to learn, those WICAR components. WICAR is the foundation for instruction in the Avid Elementary classroom. Two, culture. Avid Elementary sites incorporate rigorous, relevant, differentiated opportunities for all students in an environment that promotes college readiness. Three, leadership. Avid Elementary leaders support, guide, facilitate Avid Elementary implementation for all students. Four, systems. Avid Elementary sites align their systems through the use of the four pillars of excellence, being accountability, articulation, assessment, collaboration, to ensure the fidelity of Avid Elementary implementation across the site. Looking more closely at the pillars, accountability is the ownership at all levels and within all roles. Articulation is the two-way communication across all levels of feeder pattern. Assessment, we use data to inform instruction. Collaboration provides consistency in expectations and vocabulary, thereby reducing variations of baseline measurements. Avid Elementary is a pilot. We are recommending that Lamar Network pilot the Avid Elementary program next school year. Elementary campuses and Lamar Network are nine, and we will start with sixth grade. Why did we choose Lamar Network? Lamar Network has a more precise and clear feeder patterns, demonstrated a higher level of readiness to implement Avid Elementary. Avid Elementary supports improvement efforts for schools not meeting state and federal accountability standards. Why a pilot? We want to ensure fidelity of implementation. We want to determine Avid Elementary effectiveness. We want to resolve potential barriers hindering success. As well, we want to confirm Avid Elementary successfully supports the academic needs of students after receiving the results of the curriculum audit and the design of instructional model. This slide provides you the estimated cost of year one of implementation for nine campuses with an estimated cost of $56,000. Slide two is year two with implementation of just those nine campuses, $52,000. Questions?
Then, in the elementary school, is Avid a concept? In the junior highs and high schools, it's a class?
It's a class at the junior highs. In, in the elementaries, it's throughout the whole system. So, every student will learn notebooking. Every student will learn how to use agendas. Every student will learn study skills. So, it, it's embedded within every class with all teachers, all students.
Will all teachers be Avid trained?
At the sixth grade level, yes, sir.
Okay, Dr. Rice.
This is going to start at sixth grade as a pilot. What will be the, the measurement to assess the effectiveness of it and the expansion of it? And what is the expansion plan after this next year?
Dr. Carter is in charge of the evaluation of this program.
Always.
So, it's a segue for Dr. Carter. Do you want to address it?
That was an escape hatch. No, the, when it comes to Avid, of course, the, they have, have a very clear objective as to what it's going to be. We'll be going over this a little bit with the program evaluation framework. And Avid pilot is, is one of those things. But one of the, the things we'd be looking at would be anything dealing with the 28 metrics or utilizing the 28 metrics that lend itself to this whole thing. But it, it's also, and I can get into that more specifically, especially when it goes into the elements about a comprehensive program evaluation and what that might mean, you know, like with Avid. But it does take, really looks at the fidelity of the implementation, the consistency across the nine campuses, for instance. And there's certain written reports, you know, interim reports that, that show, you know, the, the level to which those, the implementation does have fidelity, or where there's a lot of differences, even about the, you know, the training of the teachers, you know, and how they're responding to all of those sort of things. But then, it's one of the things that, that the program may have certain assessments embedded within it, and those will always be utilized, because that's one of the things of, if the students aren't demonstrating some kind of proficiency on those, on their own assessments, it's not likely that it's going to then translate into what, you know, like STAR test performance might be. So, we want to be looking at that. And of course, making comparison, it's a treatment group. Well, how does that compare with the rest of the district, sixth grade? So, you would think that there should be a differential effect, just by virtue of having Avid. Otherwise, why, why spend the money to have it? So, that's, STAR is going to be a big, performance on STAR is going to be a big one, but, but other areas, other measures, again. Whatever of the 28 metrics that we are using overall for the strategic plan, we will use in any of our program evaluation. And so, Avid will be one of them, too.
Okay, okay. Good answer. In preparing individuals for success and working in, you know, planners and organizational skills, those types of things, we came from, as a family, Montessori. And even as early as kindergarten, first grade, by third grade, these kids were masters at choosing their own destiny, deciding their own fate, knowing that they had X number of works, as they call them, different types of assignments across the spectrum, whether it was a math focus, history focus, et cetera, that they had to get through a certain number in a day or a certain number in a week. It's very different than what we have in our traditional model here in public, public ed. But my point is that even at that young age, they came up with their own time management skills, their own organizational skills. And, you know, it's, it's not Avid per se, but I, I would hope that in, somewhere in our, our planning that we, we put some of those things down into our, our lower areas. I'm always saying that the more we can do and the higher the expectation we can set for our pre-K through three on all levels, whether it's academics, organization, respect, nurturing, conflict resolution, all those issues, the better we're going to have it on the way up. So, I, I, I think this is a great proven method at the high school levels, the junior high levels that have Avid-type things in them. So, I think this is a great way to, to begin. But I would encourage the district to look at, not necessarily just one robust program, that there's elements buried within Avid that are, are, you know, foundational pieces for an individual's success in life, and that we could take some of those and start integrating those into our, our little ones as well. Because it might not be a planner that works for everybody, per se. They might have some other way that works perfect for them, and it makes them just as efficient as it would me, working off a day planner kind of thing. But something so that we can match individuals' learning styles and what works for individuals versus just a cookie cutter. So, that's something that I'd like to see more in the future. But I, I think this is a great start. It'll be interesting to see what the data shows out of it. So, thanks for doing it.
Thank you.
I envision the planner being something electronic in the very near future, don't you?
Yes, absolutely. I, I think the, the junior high planners that are already in existence and some of the elementary ones that are those big notebooks, yeah, electronics is the way to go.
Mr. Papa.
Thank you, President Barron. So, am I hearing that we're going to get a performance report specifically on, on this pilot program at the end of the year, next year?
Yes, and, and that's coming up in the program evaluation, that we're going to present which programs we recommend to evaluate. This is one of them that we're going to recommend for this purpose.
That's great. And, you know, I was thinking, just throughout the conversations today, you know, we, we, we're very deliberate about setting kind of our, our goals, our mission, our vision, and, and now, we just can't wait to get there. And so, we're throwing a lot out there. I mean, we're, we're, we're starting new programs and pilots and after-school programs and before-school programs and during-school programs. And, and I recognize that it's a lot for our teachers and our staff at, at the council levels. It's, it's good, all good and well for us to come up with all these ideas, but you guys have to, you know, actually execute them. And the teachers have to teach them. And so, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Hogg and Ms. Owens about making sure that we build up that capacity for the staff here to be able to do it. So, with that being said, my question is on the rationale for the Lamar Network, am I to read that the, that demonstrated higher level of readiness, was that they had a higher level of interest in this?
Yes, sir. I met with them, and we did talk about and discuss all the initiatives going on. You know, we're going to have to really offer a lot of support, but they had complete buy-in in, in the Lamar Network as well as the teachers. So, they were very excited about it. So, that was one of the reasons why we decided to recommend.
I think this is a great program. There's no doubt about it. I'm just concerned about everything that we're throwing out there. And if they're ready to take it on, then all the better for them. And I'm, I'm glad that they're, they're willing to step up. And, and obviously, that's an area where I think this has a potential to make a big impact. And so, kudos to, to that, to, to that group of, of schools for being, for their willingness to take some more on top of everything we're throwing at them.
Absolutely. And we will do all that we can to support them.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. We're very excited.
We all will do everything we can to support you.
We will support them. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next part of this presentation is U I L academics.
Oh, it's, I see.
And then, and then world languages, so.
He is ready to go, isn't he? Okay. We will again start with the rationale. U I L A plus is an after-school enrichment opportunity. It supports our strategic plan in that 100% of students will be actively involved in extracurricular activities and co-curricular activities. U I L A plus supports student interest and provides academic extensions for all students. A little bit about the program. Serves the grade two through six. They may participate. It consists of 15 academic contests, including events in core areas and fine arts. Contest vary for each grade level. Contest topics are aligned with the TEES and college and career readiness standards. Students may participate in multiple contests. This next slide, we surveyed our schools to determine interest. On the left of the slide is the, the academic contest. Middle slide are the grade levels that may participate, and the right are the schools that have shown interest in those particular areas. I won't go through all that. That's the slide. Preparation for district meets. Schools typically hold practice sessions to determine highest performing students in each grade level and event. All interested students may participate in practice sessions. Practice sessions and invitational meets help identify the students who will represent each school at the district meet. District meets include six to 10 schools. Schools within each network will compete as a district. District teams consist of three to five students per school for each event offered at each grade level. Contest windows are in the spring and the fall. The U I L A plus cost estimate for the participation fees, the teachers, transportation, and supplies, an estimated total of $170,000. Questions?
Mr. Papa.
Thank you, President Barron. Destination Imagination is, is one that I've heard has a great deal of support. I don't see that on here. Is there a reason? There it is.
I'm sorry, he told me to, and I was trying to get it back up. I'm sorry. What was your question?
Destination Imagination, that's one of the programs at the elementary level, and I don't see it here, right? I mean, there's, that's a.
That's great. This is, this is dealing with the U I L.
Yes.
Kind of supported or endorsed programs.
Okay, and that's not one, Destination Imagination is not one?
It's not, it's not a part of the U I L catalog, if you will. It's separate from that. It's a competition, but it's not part of the U I L catalog. Is that right, Julie? And so, this discussion is about U I L, just like we have U I L academic competitions. And so this discussion is about UIL, just like we have UIL academic competitions at the high school and the junior highs, bringing that to the elementaries.
And I'm just thinking about this because we just saw it all through Facebook and about some of our Destination Imagination schools that are going to like national competition or something like that. What school was?
Hill.
Hill and Butler were the two, and so, anyway. Does the cost include if they have to like, is there district and state competitions and national competitions for these, or?
At the elementary level, we only go to the district level. High school is beyond that, but at the elementary level, we only go to district.
That's it? No one else goes to anything other than district? Or you're saying AISD would only go to districts?
At the elementary level. We only go to the district level. That's all that's offered until you get to high school.
Okay, so there's no opportunity to go anywhere else at the elementary level?
Right, we compete within district.
Okay, that's it. So then this covers it all. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was just trying to decipher the stipend page. Two sponsors per grade level?
Per school. It's an estimate. We came up with how many we possibly might think that we would sponsor. I don't think that we will have two at each grade level at each school, but that was the estimate that we did come up with.
And this is per grade level, so not per subject of all that list of subjects?
Per grade level.
So one sponsor might have 20 different teams?
Well, usually...
Five teams?
If they are doing one contest, they might meet two days a week or one day a week, and they could have seven students, they could have up to 18 students, depending on the interest, participation in that activity.
The last part of this presentation is World Languages.
Okay.
World Languages. Waiting on Mark. Waiting on Mark.
Yes. We will again, we will begin with our rationale once more. World Language supports a strategic plan as its mission to empower and engage all students to be contributing responsible citizens. Also, a rationale is cultural awareness, which is the ability to appreciate the differences of other cultures, which is a necessary skill for a contributing citizen of an increasingly diverse world. Also, students in AISD's existing curricular and enrichment programs can benefit significantly through a longer learning sequence for languages. There was a correlation between learning a second language and increased attention span, improved memory skills, improved reading, writing, and oral skills, enhanced problem-solving and cognitive skills, improved ability to hypothesize in science, increased academic achievement on standardized tests, including SAT and ACT, and my personal favorite, delayed onset of age-related cognitive losses. Just had to put that in there. The purpose: to provide the opportunity for all students to acquire additional languages that will allow them to function at the survival level outside of school, to increase their awareness of other cultures, to grow in their knowledge of global society, as well as to provide the opportunity for groups of interested students to attain a higher level of proficiency for college and career success. Proposed implementation: we will reflect the best practices as currently understood in the field of second language acquisition. We will secure and adapt curricula from the Utah Language Flagship, of which AISD is a member. Our classes will be highly engaging. We'll be staffed from a variety of sources, including university students, honor students under the direction of their sponsors. Year one, we had 20 campuses that have shown interest, six campuses in Chinese, four in French, one in German, four in Portuguese, five in Spanish. We surveyed our schools and students and staff to determine what their interests were in which languages. If you want to see a breakdown of network participation, Arlington will have five campuses, Bowie two, Lamar four, Martin three, Sam Houston four, and Seguin two. Year one estimated cost, 20 campuses. The classes will go each semester 14 weeks, and they'll meet twice a week, and the total estimated cost is $116,000. Questions?
I can always ask a question to cover pauses if you need me to, President Barron. The, as far as the interest indicator, it was to the elementary students and the staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Was there any opportunity for the parents to chime in?
Not at this point. We have not surveyed them. Just the staff and the students.
Okay. I was just curious. And as far as the cost, I think this is great. I think the earlier we can do language, the better. I'd like to see it even earlier. And this is the beginning. This is great. These are positive directions. With the cost on these, have we looked at getting grant funds to cover this on literacy-related grants? Has that been explored? I'm always looking for free money. Didn't know. Everybody's looking the other way.
No eye contact. That's the trick. I think this builds some capacity with our FLAP grant, and that's a grant, the language grant that we have in the district. And so some of this was, yeah, right, and StarTalk was, could be funded with some of that, not exclusively, but, and we should have framed it, I think, at the beginning, this is to build the capacity and moving forward where we add languages and things like that, and to build a pipeline for high school.
Yeah. Okay. That's good. I think it's wonderful. I appreciate showing what networks had, how many programs. I'd be curious to go the step further to see which programs at each network, you know, what Arlington High was interested in, if it was all languages, just, you know, Chinese, Spanish, et cetera, that kind of information. Just curious. Partly just as a curiosity, but also to communicate out to the community that this was something that was a school choice type of scenario where we may get parents from one part of town saying, hey, I want my kid to learn Chinese. I'd be really interested in that.
I hope so.
And we need to be able to communicate, hopefully out there before that would occur, that this is our methodology, this is why, and those types of things.
We can do that, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Barron. One real quick question, and I kind of asked it on some of the athletic pieces. Do we have a minimum number of students that need to participate at each school? What if only three sign up? Are we still paying the full stipend?
I, we have not, as far as I know, we have not, or have we?
We have an answer. Sandy, you want to come to the mic?
We're looking at a class cap of 15. That minimum, though, you know, you have to really look at, you don't really want to turn kids away, but we're actually looking at the options that if there's an over, if there's over 15, we might have a different, an additional Spanish class if Chinese isn't interested. But we really aren't looking at taking anything away. We've put it out there. We've said, okay, we've tried to give everybody their first or second choice because that's their interest. So we really don't want to take anything back. So what you see up there, we really are committed to making sure that Arlington Network has at least a minimum of that number of sections.
And I ask that question just from playing a little devil's advocate of 99% of our campuses, it's going to work outstanding, it's not a problem, but I always want to make sure, if you're receiving that stipend, you are recruiting kids into that program, because as you've seen, many of our citizen groups, and we've had concern, of some classes have small groups. And if we're paying you a stipend outside of the normal, part of that stipend includes making sure you're recruiting kids to be in that program. And so I ask that, you know, we just, we have to think those type of things through to make sure, hey, listen, you're doing this, if you don't have enough kids, we're not going to have the class this year. And I think that's a realistic expectation.
And I think we're looking, we're also trying to be very, very flexible in the sense that if you look at all of those languages, you know, Chinese for right now, as far as capacity, we're probably at our cap, being able to say we can offer four sections throughout the district. But we have some flexibility with French and possibly Spanish. And so we're open to making those changes if there's more interest in one language rather than another.
In year one, if I get a report back that says we had three kids at one campus in a class, I can tolerate that. If year three, it comes back, I mean, as programs progress, listen, we all know there's ramp-up times for any type of program, but we've got to make sure they're relevant, and kids are choosing them. It's kind of like our career and tech folks talked about, they probably face it harder than anyone, career and tech programs are constantly changed, so they have to constantly evolve that eighth-grade class for what they're doing. I think the same thing needs to occur, to make sure we're offering what's being taken and what's being offered, and make sure we have kids in there that are taking it. That's all I ask.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Just a curiosity question for you.
On the, the question that we were just curious about is seeing Portuguese up here.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked, quite honestly.
Where did that come from? And when the kids were asked, did they have a list to pick from, or how did that work?
The survey that we conducted is actually a couple of years older, and we did not do a survey with elementary. What we've done is, over the last couple of years, Dr. Cavazos mentioned the FLAP grant. FLAP grant allowed us to build capacity in French, German, Spanish, some of the languages that we offer here in AISD already. However, the last couple of years, Sharon Deering is an absolutely wonderful grant writer, and she is the specialist for our LOT department. FLAP was close to $1 million over three years. StarTalk, she wrote a teacher effectiveness grant last year. One of the recommendations they gave us last year with StarTalk was, you really need to get into a children's program, and you'd really need to have, offer a foreign language over the summer for children. So this past October, StarTalk applications came out, and they added a critical language, which was Portuguese. When you're looking at all the other languages, you really don't want to compete with all of these other districts that are already doing Chinese and Arabic and these other languages. So we selected Portuguese, thinking that we, knowing that we could staff at least four sections. And so across the country, we have one of four Portuguese, one of the four Portuguese grants that they awarded. So that's how we ended up. We figured, if we're going to staff for it over the summer, why not extend it into the fall? So it made sense.
Sandy, but why is it a language on that list to begin with?
Oh, it's a critical language. Portuguese is actually the sixth most widely spoken language in the world, and it is the third most widely spoken European language. And so...
Didn't know that.
It's, yeah, it's fascinating. So, and we're on it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's exciting.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
What grade level are we looking at, since this doesn't say anything about what grade level?
That's what, second through sixth grade. Second through sixth grade.
Second to sixth, all right. And this is a club? After-school club?
After-school, we're calling it after-school clubs, yes. They'll meet twice a week for 14 weeks, first semester, and again the second semester. And we're looking at keeping those languages consistent the first year.
And we have certified teachers to do this? We have people who speak those languages?
We have people who speak those languages.
Who happen to be teachers?
Some are teachers, some might be students. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Now, Dr. Carter will come and present some information about program evaluations, and we've had this discussion about evaluating our programs, and so Dr. Carter's done some work on that. Dr. Carter?
Good evening, President Barron, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Cavazos. I was almost going to greet you in foreign language, because at my age, given what I just heard, I needed all the cognitive help I can sustain. Anyway, the Achieve Today, Excel Tomorrow strategic plan inherently calls for a keen management of resources, and the, one of the ways by which we can do that is through program evaluation. Since there's an awful lot of money, time, energy that is put into programs, it's good to see how effective they are. So want to provide a program evaluation framework for next year. What you see here are potential programs that could be evaluated. You see they're categorized on direct instruction, instructional support, and just, this may not even be quite an exhaustive list, but it's a pretty good one. So one of the questions is, which ones are we going to evaluate? Again, amount of time that it takes, the level of evaluation, et cetera. What can be evaluated? Can all of them be evaluated? To some extent, every one of them can have some kind of statistic on them to indicate effectiveness. But when it comes to program evaluation, you have to kind of pare it down, and I'll explain that based on the kinds of program evaluations that we are wanting to pursue. Principal factors to consider for selection: alignment with the strategic plan by itself automatically, current or expected breadth of service to students, the cost of the program, and lastly, alignment of available metrics and program objectives. What I mean by that is, for instance, you've named the 28 metrics as your way of measuring how we're getting the baseline, how we're doing in the strategic plan, so automatically those become the metrics that we want to be using. Well, what about program objectives, and how are those aligned? That is an important consideration even before you select a program to evaluate, because we don't want to get into too much about crafting new metrics in order to evaluate a program. There are two levels of program evaluation, really, for formal program evaluation. You have the comprehensive program evaluation, which I just call it Level One, and this, it is comprised of the following. You have a formal plan, and that plan, those plans are actually shared with you that you can review. There's a process evaluation. Process evaluation is basically just, how is the, whatever the program is, how is it being implemented? How do people think about it? What are you observing in its implementation? All those things are part of process. There's a formative evaluation. That's when you have some preliminary metrics to go with some of the process things that you find, and then you have a summative evaluation at the end of the year. There's a cost analysis. There's a full written report of findings and recommendations. So that's what makes this whole thing very comprehensive. And in some ways, this is kind of scooping what is going to be a sure recommendation from the curriculum audit. They are going to be saying, we need to have more program evaluation that does all this. And so, like I said, it's kind of scooping that in anticipation that that is coming. Then you have a basic program evaluation. It's not quite as comprehensive. It has the formative evaluation. You have some of the preliminary metrics, you know, during the school year, and you have a summative, and then you'll just have a written report, which is mostly geared towards some tables and... and an executive summary. Again, looking at those potential programs and given the selection criteria we wanted to go for, for the comprehensive program evaluation, we've selected these five. Can't see it too well on here, so they're listed. We have the bilingual education, English as second language. We have special education. Title I. The Avid Pilot Program. And the RTI process, the Tier One, which covers across the board. For the basic program evaluation, looking at these potential programs, we've come up with these particular ones. So we have the newcomer center. We have Venture High School. Turning Point Schools. And the tutoring program. So those are the, that's the overall in terms of what the framework is and then utilizing that framework, what to expect in terms of a product and program evaluation and which programs are actually going to be covered this first year. And this is what we're recommending. For a timeframe on this, June 20th, excuse me, is the initial meetings with the program managers. That's always an important thing to do, to establish the framework of each evaluation. There's not going to be any surprise with what is going to be pursued in the evaluation itself. About July 18th, we should have the, to go into research literature pertaining to each program. Every program evaluation will always have some kind of a section dealing with review of literature. That literature review will be written up for, sex for each program by August 1st. We will consult, the program evaluator will consult with me to propose the methodologies that will be incorporated. By August 16th, we'll prepare a preliminary evaluation plan for each program. By the 21st, review those preliminary plans with the program managers. And then by the end of August, finalize the official program evaluation plans and begin implementation of the process evaluation. School have started and now you can begin the process of actually observing what's going on. January 17th would be the first process and formative evaluation interim reports. And then the, by the 24th, we review those reports with the program managers themselves. And by the end of the January, we have, we would finalize those interim reports and the executive summaries. At the February board meeting, we would report the interim reports as executive summaries to the board. June 12th, we would prepare the preliminary summative report for each program. And by 17th, review the preliminary summative reports with each program manager. And by the 24th, finalize the summative reports and executive summaries. And right there in July, report the final report, executive summaries to the board. You actually would probably get something before that because of the, finishing up with the budget cycle. And the reason the summative reports are so late is clearly there's going to be the use of the state assessment results as part of that. And that's the only reason. Otherwise, those reports would be coming in maybe by the end of the fifth, six week period. I'll entertain your questions.
I would envision program evaluation as the opportunity for us to eliminate programs.
Yes.
And I don't see any chance of these big buck programs being eliminated. So what will be the objective getting the report back? What's the report going to say to us?
Improvement. The opportunities for improvement because the recommendations certainly would specify areas where there can be some program improvement. So it's quite, you're quite right in that regard. No, these are not, these are not going to go away. I guess Avid is possible, as a possibility, but for Title I, Special Ed, bilingual ed, no, those are not going to go away. But how could these particular programs, in looking at their characteristics or features or outcomes, where could some improvements be made?
Mr. Pampa?
Thank you, President Barron. I guess, I'm trying to figure out where you have that, that being evaluated, basically the effectiveness of the program. How are you going to determine what demonstrates effectiveness and efficiency in the program? Because, I mean, I'm thinking that's what we want to see, right? Is this program effective? Is it doing what it's supposed to do? Is it doing it in the most efficient manner? I'm trying to figure out where that fits.
Report on findings and recommendations will cover completely about program effectiveness using the metrics that would be one of the 28 with each one of them. And then from there, I mean, it's, this is the first time in this, since I've been here that there actually is going to be a program evaluation, which is going to address effectiveness and then a recommendation actually being articulated. But they're just, you know, these are standard kinds of processes for program evaluation and effectiveness is always inherent in every program evaluation.
Sure. And I guess, you know, probably in your timeframe, and I think we have a meeting sometime in August, I'd like to hear what those effectiveness measures are going to be before you get into, deep into actually evaluating these programs.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to go into too much detail with all this, but the plan, that you will, you'll see those plans and you'll see exactly what the, what the measure, it's like a hypothesis, you know, testing a hypothesis. It's supposed to do this, here's the objective, here's the metric that's going to be used.
Yeah.
Do they?
Okay, and I just want to make sure that this board has an ability to look at that before you go about evaluating the programs, come back to us with the results and then we say, well, that's not really what we expect out of that program. And so, you know, let us be part of that process of establishing what the criteria is that we're going to evaluate. I mean, you'll bring your recommendations and just like today, we'll, we'll give you some feedback. We always have feedback.
Right.
And so, and then we'll end up with something that staff feels comfortable with and that we feel comfortable with, that it's going to deliver the, that I, especially, at least I can speak for myself, that it's going to deliver what I'm looking for in terms of, I know that if you evaluate this, the program will tell me whether it's doing what I think it should do or not.
Yes, yes.
So there will be that.
And I simply failed to put that particular part in there about report to the board on those plans. But then those August dates in there about the plan.
I would expect that right around that timeframe, we'd see it. Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Barron. Mr. Pampa, I'm following right with you. And Dr. Carter, I know you have good tools and I know you know how to evaluate and I love seeing you had executive summary because I don't want all your data that you have. No offense.
Somebody's going to want it.
I know how much data you deal with. One idea, just to kind of think, and you've probably already looked at this, I know Dr. Cavazos and some of my colleagues were at CRSS and we've been talking about program evaluation a long time. So we're really excited to see this because we want to make sure every program is worthwhile. But Ector County ISD had a strategic abandonment tool that's provided through CRSS. I just pulled it up on my screen. You have to search and I know you probably already looked and Dr. C and I have talked about it. I think it's a great summary, one page sheet to be able to look at and say.
Yes.
And I know many of us that were down at CRSS were pretty impressed by it. So I would use that as a recommendation tool of how to build it.
Let me tell you, again, didn't want to get into too much detail.
Right, I understand.
Executive summaries will definitely be less than, or no more than one page.
Love it.
More likely two thirds of a page is probably what it would be. Then there'll be an abstract. For those who want a little bit more, there's going to be an abstract, which will be multiple pages, no more than like four or five pages of an abstract. And then there is the full blown report, which will be multiple pages with lots of tables and everything else.
And I think this report also could be used for that department, the years they aren't being evaluated, to still use as their guide for what they're producing throughout the year.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Plain and simple. If they're using that tool and that's what they're guiding some things off of, it's a great tool for a leader to be able to sit there and take that evaluation and almost use it as their own little dashboard within their department to make sure, do we have the clear metric for measurement? Is the outcome service rendered and measured frequently without, I mean, those type of things can really help them, if they know what we're judging on, you guys are judging on, it helps them determine their program to meet those needs. So I knew you were already looking at it, but I've been set on that, that tool for a while. We heard it and we saw it and we were pretty impressed with it, so.
Very good. Okay. Ms. Owens?
Thank you. That was the tool that we looked at, I thought was excellent. But also with this, Dr. Carter, a great job on this program evaluation, so, you know, something we've wanted to see for some time and, you know, job one alignment with their strategic plan. And I'm with you that these are all programs, Mr. Barron, that are likely to stay, but I think this would be a great process to go through to make sure that these important programs that we know are going to be here are certainly aligned with where we're trying to go with strategic plans. So that is very good. But the next step is what Mr. Hogg was mentioning, the strategic abandonment tool, I think was a very powerful tool that, you know, I suppose that you've already, you're already well versed in it, I can tell. We can't, we can't beat you to it.
Just a little bit familiar with it. I don't know a lot of it.
Well, I'm not either, but I thought it was very strong and I thought it was articulated very well. So definitely glad to see this and just like I mentioned earlier in the evening and just with when athletics was up, you know, think about all the things that we've added. It's exciting these times. We look up and we have the strategic plan, we find things moving and we have a lot of momentum in a lot of areas and I just want to make sure that we, we have the proper support and staff across the board. And, you know, because I'm thinking just over the last, you know, just off the top of my head, we've added Studer and strategic plans and a program evaluations and on it goes because every time we think about something new and exciting to measure, we're asking you to come, you know? So I think that's just something board we may, and Dr. Costner would want to consider in this year's budget.
And just in this case, just to add some clarity here, we did approve a senior program evaluator and then Title I has put in their application to approve two or one, one, and then contract evaluation is in his budget.
Good news. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
That's it.
Appreciate it.
Very good, thank you.
We're getting close, folks. 2013-14 Board of Trustees Meeting Calendar. We spoke of this at our last meeting. The published version was provided to the board members this evening. It looks a lot like a school calendar. Has regular meetings on it and work session meetings on it. And that takes care of that one. Next item is legislative update. Ms. Powell?
There we go. All right. President Barron, board members, Dr. Cavazos, I will make this brief. We are getting close to the end of the legislative session. There are just 11 days remaining. There are a number of significant deadlines that are going to start occurring literally every day now in terms of what actions have to happen to keep bills alive. And so ultimately, I think Sunday is, or I'm sorry, Saturday is the last day for the House committees to report Senate bills and, and joint resolutions out of committee. So anything that doesn't make it by Saturday will be effectively dead. Anything that's already passed out of the Senate and comes to the House, if it doesn't make it out of committee by then, it will be dead effectively. In terms of individual items of significance, the appropriations bill is the biggest thing of interest at the moment and continues to be. In talking with some folks today, it was described to me to be a very fluid situation. The conferees have indicated a desire to add $3.2 billion back to public education. This is more than either chamber had previously voted and approved, so that was good news. They were able to do that because property value estimates statewide are higher than they were originally thought to be. This, this good news though may be derailed by a couple of issues that have hung up the committee at this point. There's a Medicaid rider that was at issue and then also, House Democrats are insisting that $4 billion be added back to public ed. They want to completely restore the funding that was cut in the last session. And so that's caused a great deal of controversy among the conferees and is looking very much like they may not come to an agreement. I am told that a deal has got to be reached by Friday and I was told earlier that the next 36 hours, which would get us to the end of the evening tomorrow night, would, would be telling with this and would tell us whether or not we are going to have a budget deal. If a deal can't be reached, then we'll wind up with a special session. And the fear is that if they come back to special session and start all over, public ed will not fare as well as they have so far and that, that we would likely see something much less than the $3.2 billion that they're talking about now. Again, just to show this, the estimated revenues for AISD at that $3.2 billion add back into public ed would mean significant sum of money for us. $15.2 million using the Senate's version of the budget and $16.4 million using the House version of that delivery. So a little bit of difference there, but it is a significant sum of money for us. Terms of other bills, Senate Bill Two, which is the big bill relating to charters, was heard today, or I think it was heard today and passed on second reading. It will be brought to the House tomorrow for a third final reading and it's expected to pass there. Once the House passes Senate Bill Two, the expectation is that Lieutenant Governor DuHurst will name the Senate conferees for House Bill Five. These two bills have been linked together and it's been said that Senate Bill Two has to pass in order for House Bill Five to pass. So this is the Senate Bill Two, bill's the one that would raise caps on the number of charters that are authorized, up to 305 ultimately by year 2019.
Ms. Powell, I just want to let you know that SB Two just passed tonight on third reading.
Third reading, okay.
Tonight, they pushed it through.
Interesting.
I think there was incentive so that HB Five would finally have the conferees named.
Okay, very interesting. Thank you. All right, and then House Bill Five is the one, the big bill, signature piece of education legislation this session. It was related to public school accountability assessment and curriculum requirements for graduation. It's path both the House and the Senate and again, it's in conference committee awaiting appointment of the Senate conferees. The main differences between these two bills has to do with the endorsements that students can earn on their diplomas and then also the particular exams, the end of course exams that are required. They each require five, but it's a slightly different combination. Has to do with the English one reading and writing exams are slightly different, two versions. Other bills of interest, Senate Bill 1458 is the big TRS bill that's posted tomorrow for action in the House. That bill would shore up TRS. It comes with a pretty hefty price tag for school districts. The estimate for us is $3.7 million. The bill would require a one and a half percent contribution to a payroll cost from school districts into TRS. So that is a large number and is somewhat of concern, but it would help shore up TRS. House Bill 1926 is a bill for, relating to the provision of electronic courses. That bill is left pending right now in Senate ed. Also then, Senate Bill 20, I'm sorry, 1263, it's been called the parent trigger bill, allows parents to petition for repurposing or alternative management or closure of schools after three years of a campus being rated unacceptable. That bill is, for all parent purposes, considered dead this session. Then there was the identical bills, SB 14 and HB 14, that would require certain language be included in the document that orders a bond sale. These have been a great concern for a number of the document that orders a bond sale. These have been of great concern for a number of public entities, not just school districts, as far as what, what the requirements are. They both have gotten better over time, but we're still of concern. House Bill 14 was voted out of committee and then was sent back to committee on a point of order. Senate Bill 14, though, has passed out of the Senate and has now been sent to the House and passed, or referred, rather, to the House Appropriations Committee. That committee does not have another meeting scheduled unless they've done so this evening at this time. And again, Saturday's the deadline for bills to pass out of House committees. So, if they, if they do not call a committee meeting for the House Appropriations Committee tomorrow or by Saturday morning, then this bill will die. And that is it, and I'll take questions.
Thank you, Ms. Powell.
Next item on the agenda is to consider parent-student A grievance hearing. We will now adjourn into closed session pursuant to Sections 551.074 and 551.0821 of the Open Meetings Act. Section 551.074 provides that the meeting may be closed to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Section 551.0821 provides that the Open Meetings Act does not require a school board to conduct an open meeting to deliberate in a matter regarding public school students if personally identifiable information about the students will necessarily be revealed by the deliberation. I ask that everyone who is not a party to this hearing and who is not going to participate in this hearing to now exit the boardroom. Thank you for your cooperation. We are going into open session. We are now in open session. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move to uphold the superintendent's decision in this case.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Solins, second by Mr. Hibbs to uphold the superintendent's recommendation, or determination. Please vote. All members present voting in the affirmative. The superintendent's decision stands. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to consider parent-student B grievance hearing. We will now adjourn into closed session pursuant to Sections 551.074 and 551.0821 of the Open Meetings Act. Section 551.074 provides that the meeting may be closed to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Section 551.0821 provides that the Open Meetings Act does not require a school board to conduct an open meeting to deliberate in a matter regarding public school students if personally identifiable information about the students will necessarily be revealed by the deliberation. I ask that everyone who is not a party to this hearing or who is not going to participate in this hearing to now exit the boardroom, and I thank you for your cooperation. We're now in open session. Would you please open the doors? Do I have a motion?
President Barron, I move to uphold the superintendent's decision.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hogg, second by Mrs. Solins. Please vote. All members present voting in the affirmative. The motion passes. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Ellis. We are adjourned.